Amplification.
Hey, you could be the next Red Sox announcer. Now batting.
You're all set.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's June 27th about 7:00 PM and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. We'll begin with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to present to the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rabinovich.
Good news, I'm gonna pass this evening.
Ken?
I'm off.
Cliff?
My boat got fixed today. After five weeks. That's good news.
It wasn't bad shit.
For me.
Mike?
No, I just committed five grand to a new heater. So.
I guess it's, uh, school has closed and we are fresh out of good news because we need students for good news. We'll move on to the meetings of the meeting of June 6th and June 12th, one at a time. Do I have any additions or corrections to the minutes of June 6th?
A movie except June 6th as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero?
I was absent that meeting? Abstained.
Okay, three, zero, one.
I think you were at that meeting.
And the meeting of June 12th? Motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero. Thank you. The, um, I'd like to hold off on the committee reports because I know one of our members is going to be joining us shortly and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, I just actually was gonna put up a slide, um, but...
But I ruined your timing.
Yes.
Okay.
But that's fine, so, um...
I'm not saying it.
[laughing]. Hello, wait. All right, let's just...
All right, while you're doing your technology setup, I wanted to let everybody know, including some members of the committee, the superintendent evaluation and goal-setting process, this year will occur in September. It has traditionally been done somewhat earlier than that, but there's a very good reason why the superintendent and I felt it should be delayed, and that is since a significant part of the superintendent's goals and a significant part therefore of how we judge the superintendent's performance relates to student achievement, we will not be, have those numbers available to us, specifically MCAS and AP scores at the high school, until early, perhaps the first week in September. The truth is, they are made available to the superintendent and the school administration in August, but the results are embargoed and we don't get to see them. So, we are going to be doing the superintendent's self-evaluation on September 5th, and then two weeks later, we'll be meeting again on the 19th, and we will do the superintendent's evaluation on the 19th, and then as a result of getting feedback from his evaluation, he will be doing his goals on October 3rd. Does that make sense to everybody? Anybody have any concerns, comments? I saw no way we could properly evaluate without student achievement information. The other thing I wanted to mention with respect to transportation, as people understand, the effort on the part of town meeting and the school committee to bring the purchase of four buses to town voters was denied, we still, we therefore have to go to a plan, and I've forgotten the letter I would associate with this.
Z.
Z, yes, thank you, Dr. Sylvia, Plan Z as it applies to transportation. So, I have initiated contact with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I have also initiated contact with the chairman of the Finance Committee, and I am going to ask that the, and I would ask that people refrain from comments, that the Action Committee be restarted based on the fact that we still have a very significant need. That process will take place hopefully very shortly. I have sent a communication to Chairman Holmes, I have also seen him personally, and I hope to get that started as soon as possible. The urgency comes from the fact that we are doing such a good job of maintaining our buses that it is costing us a lot more, and we are now predicting a deficit, including the revol, the impact of the revolver, for the overall budget for transportation for fiscal year 12, which means that since the bus fleet continues to age and will not be replaced, at least as of this moment, FY13's deficit could be even larger, and that means we could end up presenting a bill to town meeting for a prior year, which would be a very uncomfortable situation. So, this, there is some urgency about this, and I felt compelled to let people know that and that we're taking steps to try and let people know that at the leadership level of the town. With that, I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. As we all know, from my perspective, something that is very important for the town and the school department is our special election on July 25th. This slide has the four ballot questions, the override, teacher layoffs for $780, the high school roof, debt exclusion for $110, instructional material for $341, and minded feasibility study. It also has the costs to a taxpayer per $1,000 evaluation, and if you add all of them up, the total, it is 28 cents per thousand, or $28 per $100,000 valuation on one's home. And the next slide...
Just to be clear, those numbers are per year, correct?
That is correct, and the next slide unfortunately doesn't have that, but I will point that out. Nope, we're going this way, all right. So, your cost per year, very important, this is per year, so, if you have a house with a valuation of $100,000, your increase in your taxes totally for all four questions is $28 and 28 cents.
Per year.
Per year. For $200,000, it is $56 and 56 cents per year. And if it's $300,000 valuation, then it is $84 and 84 cents. And as one of our school committee members brought up, that since the median price in Wareham is $230, most people are in here someplace, if we're looking at from a median price, someplace a little bit over $56 and a little bit less than $84, but that is the total cost. After five years, it goes down because you lose the other four, the debt exclusions, and all you have left is the override, which is the $23 for $100,000. But that is total, that is the total cost, and you can go to the clerk's office if you are gonna be on vacation and you want an absentee ballot, you may sign up to vote if you haven't until July 5th, and the special election is July 25th. Something that is very necessary for the school system and for the town.
Anything else, Barry?
No, I'm all done. That was my main point.
Okay.
Except how to get out of this.
Mr. Rumbold, why don't we allow you to get home this evening and put you up next if that works for you?
That's fine.
Oh, no, you can, you can, you need to sit, sit in front of the mic, Steve, so they can hear you. We're glad to have someone objective about the wrestling program tonight.
This is broadcast in over 500 countries, so...
Good evening, Mr. Rabinovich, Dr. Rabinovich.
Ben Appert.
Mr. Chairman, and committee members and staff. Mr. Palladino and Mr. Larranger asked me to come up and present the proposal for having a cooperative sports relationship with Carver for ice hockey, for boys' ice hockey, and for wrestling. And you have up there, I believe, the co-op proposal that starts off with the estimated cost per sport, which is $24,000 for hockey, $11,000 for wrestling. And basically what they told me is that you have some questions about this and you wanted them to return, and they're on vacation, so they asked me to do it, and I was more than happy to do so. I'm gonna go through the proposal quickly here, and then the second page, which says "Proposal Two," I'm not sure why Mark has that on there, but we'll discuss that too. The proposal continues to budget hockey for Wareham, and Carver continues to budget wrestling. Carver pays for all the buses for wrestling, including practice shuttles to and from Wareham or Carver. It should be noted that 90 percent of the practices will be held at Wareham, or more, you know, there was, there was no exact figure. Carver keeps, well, Wareham keeps their user fees for Wareham, Carver, wrestlers, and Wareham hockey players. Carver keeps the Carver hockey players' user fees. Carver donates the use of a mat for, that's gonna be used, put in the cafeteria, I believe, and Wareham keeps any money earned for the wrestling quad mats and duel, quad meets and duel meets, and that's basically what he was referring to there is the concessions through Wareham boosters. Second page breaks it down a little bit. Assume Carver has a total of 15 athletes and Wareham has 40, multiply that by 100 per user fee, and that equals $5,500, minus the $5,500 from the estimated $35,000 to run both programs, comes out to $28,500. Split that 50/50, and you have a budget of $14,250 for each school, and Wareham gets the mat from Carver on a, on a loan basis. And so the breakdown looks like this. The wrestling budget would be $11,000, which is already in Carver's budget. The hockey budget is $24,000, which is already in Wareham's budget. Total to run both programs, $35,000. They are assuming that about 55 athletes will participate in the two programs combined. Carver had, had signups and had about seven hockey players and six wrestlers. Those numbers will rise with freshmen, because that doesn't include the freshmen coming in. Wareham has 11 returning hockey players, and Mark Larranger will recruit about 25 to 30 wrestlers. And I asked him where he got that figure, and he said, he said he thinks it was even more students that have been asking about, you know, starting a wrestling program and that type of thing. And I would also add to that, that I would think, Carver used to have a really good wrestling program, I guess not so much anymore, but I can remember that a few years ago, they really did, had a, have a good program, and I think maybe a revitalization of that program might add more wrestlers to that, but that's just speculation. So, I will turn to you for your questions.
Mike?
Hi, thank you. Just to compare this with the previous proposal, I think previously we were looking to save or gain $4,000, correct?
Uh, we, I don't know the exact figure, he didn't give me that, but he was, is expecting, based on what he told me, he thinks we're very high on this, and, and we expect to save money.
Yeah, no, it looks significantly better, if I'm reading it right.
Just as a point of information, because it says on the top of Proposal Two, Carver Superintendent, School Committee, is, is awaiting their approval, or has it in fact been approved? Do you know?
I believe it's already been approved.
You believe it's already been approved?
Right.
Okay, so when this was written, it hadn't been approved, but since it was written, they've approved it?
I think that's why he put down here "Proposal Two." I'm not sure of that, though.
Okay, that's, that's important, but, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
That was my only question, I just, I wanted to know exactly what the difference is in the savings was between the previous proposal and this one. Thank you.
Based on what I see here, there's $24,000 budgeted for hockey, and, you know, the $11,000 obviously is being paid for by Carver. I think where he's coming up with the significant savings is if you have 30 students wrestling from Wareham that are paying $100 each $3,000, user fees, that money's going back into Wareham's coffers, so that would be a significant savings right there.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken?
I, I think that answered my question, because I was looking at the same thing Mike was, the $4,000 figure was in the June 6th meeting, and if you're looking at $12,250, that's, I had written down here, there's $8,200 in difference. So, it seems like they went back and did some more negotiating.
That could be. They, I asked as many questions as I could think of when I was speaking with Mark, and that wasn't one of them.
Good. I don't have any questions, I, I think this speaks for itself.
Cliff?
I'm off, sir.
I wanna make sure I'm, I'm reading this correctly. Right now, we have $24,000 budgeted, but in fact, under this proposal, it's only gonna cost us $14,250, that's what I'm reading. Do you agree with that? And so, their savings is now just a little under $10,000, because instead of needing $24,000, which is in the budget, it's only going to cost us $14,250. And on top of that, we're getting a wrestling program as well as a hockey program. In addition to that, we have 11 players, and if I take that 11 into, whereas in the previous proposal, it was going to be close to $2,000 per hockey player, now it's closer to $1,000 per hockey player, and that doesn't count the fact that you may have some freshmen coming into the program. So, this is, in my mind, a much better proposal on, on any number of fronts, not just financial, but also, it, it still gets us two programs essentially for less...
Yeah, basically what it looks like is we drop from $24,000 to $14,250.
That's the way I'm reading it.
And Carver's is gonna go up a little bit, but they get, they get a sport that they weren't gonna have, and they probably will have a lot more, you know, student opportunities for extracurricular activity.
Is that the way you read this?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I called Mr. Palladino after I got this to make sure that my reading was correct.
Okay. So, Dr. Rabinovich, this is looking for, the actual vote tonight is looking for an approval to have a coordinated cooperative program with Carver as it relates to wrestling and ice hockey.
This is so we can go to the MIAA and ask for permission to do this, yes.
Starting this fall.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Winter, right, it's a winter sport.
Yes.
Both, both are winter?
Both are winter.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Ken?
No other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Do you have a question?
You have a question?
Yeah, I did, actually.
Go ahead.
Perhaps people who were here last night can answer this question. I, I think the previous proposal was different in the sense that they were really two separate proposals, there was a wrestling...
That's correct.
And the hockey. I think this proposal marries the two. So, if we decide, you know, that one isn't working out, this, this whole thing might have to be renegotiated.
Each year on a co-op, you'd have to...
Yeah.
Reapply.
Well, in other words, it, it does, these two aren't married in this proposal, is what it seems to me, but I'm, I'm still okay with that.
Okay.
I would, I would, I would think, no, they're not married, and they really can't be, because they are two separate sports, but from my past experience, when you do something like this and you, you, you put it before the MIAA, they expect both sports to be run. So, for one year, you're gonna get both.
Yeah.
And then it gets reevaluated.
And then at the end of every year, it's gonna get reevaluated, because I believe they have to apply to the MIAA every single year for a cooperative program.
Oh, I see, okay. All set?
All set, thank you.
So, we really don't know how long this marriage is gonna last. Wonderful.
So to speak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the cooperative wrestling slash hockey proposal as presented by Mr. Rumbold.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero. Steve, thank you very much. Cliff, are you good to go on the policy?
Am I good to go?
Who's chairing that committee, you or Rhonda?
Rhonda did that because it was the last meeting of the...
She's finishing.
Would you, would you prefer to wait for Rhonda? It's your call. We can wait.
Yeah, let's wait.
Let's wait, okay. We'll wait on...
I'll do it if she doesn't come.
Oh, no, she'll be here, all right, she'll be here. Okay, then why don't we move on to the middle, middle school? Howard, you're up, and your staff, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me?
He needs to give us an extra...
Howard, do you have one for Rhonda?
He didn't see her sitting there.
With me is Sandy Punt, one of the assistant principals, Dan Minkel, the other assistant principal, and I hope tonight is to talk about the middle school over the past year, and then to look forward to next year and what our goals are. So, to do that, we have a, the challenges and successes of the 2011, 2012 school year. And the challenges were prior to the start of the school year, and those things that we were anticipating might occur, or had occurred, and some concerns that we had. So, the first is that was the loss of nine teachers. Our class sizes went from 20 to 21, 20, 21, to 27, 28. Our four-person teams to three-person teams. Some teachers were teaching a new subject and a new grade level. An example of that was a grade seven social studies teacher who became a grade six English Language Arts teacher. We had the reassignment of teachers meant that they had to pack up their books in their room and move to another room so that we would still have the three houses within the building. And teacher certification and seniority became a priority as we did all of this. Social studies, as you know, the nine positions were social studies positions, and that became critical thinking worldview. And all subject area, including the Unified Arts teachers, taught one section of critical thinking worldview. We also had to have some professional development that was associated with critical thinking worldview, and that was for all of the staff, as well as a specific 25 teachers, as well as the administration, not holding the certification in that particular area. And then the other thing that happened was that foreign language became a trimester class instead of a year-long French or Spanish. And last but not least, we were designated as a Level III school, and because we were a Level III school, the district became a Level III district. So, that's what we were facing as we went forward. We also had the possibility of 26 student retainees in the building. We had two new rigorous curriculums, one in literacy and one in mathematics, at grade six, seven, and eight to implement. And then, last but not least, we had the hurricane come through, cancel the first workshop day, and cancel the teacher training for sixth grade math teachers and everyday math. That subsequently happened a month later, which was a blessing in disguise. So, our successes, so those are some of the challenges we faced as we began the school year. Our successes, curriculum, full-time instructional lead position created. Very, very helpful, very, very instrumental in the successes that we had this year in implementing the rigorous curriculums in mathematics and in literacy. And for mathematics, we had everyday math at grade six. For the sixth graders this year, it was their second year of having everyday math. They will go on to transitions math in grade seven, and algebra, and on as algebra was at grade eight. And with those math curriculums came all of the books necessary, reference materials for the teachers, and calculators for all of the students, including graphing calculators at the eighth grade. We had during the school year, three school-wide reading/writing samples completed by the students, and they were scored by all staff. And the students with the best writing samples were recognized, they were awarded certificates, they were awarded gift certificates, and they were posted on the website. We also implemented the new literacy curriculum, and that was in English Language Arts, at grade six, seven, and eight, with a major emphasis on informational text, increased writing by the students, and ensuring that all teachers were on the same page at the same time. That was easier to do with, with, obviously with mathematics and the new curriculums that were placed a little more difficult with the, with the English Language Arts. And one of the successes was the incoming grade six from last year was proficient, ELA 64 percent of the students, and in mathematics, 63 percent of the students. Obviously, we are very interested in their successes on the 2012 MCAS to make sure that that continued.
So, just, just to be clear, what you're saying is the combined decast minded children that came to you for sixth grade had a...
Proficiency.
Proficiency at 64 and 63 percent respectively.
That's correct.
That's quite remarkable.
It is the first time in my five years of being here, that's correct.
So...
We had a nice base to begin with, and we had a great base as far as implementing the everyday math, that students were well aware of, the way that the program worked, and the rigor that was associated with it.
Yes, I can see why you're gonna be very interested in...
As I'm sure you will be.
Yes. Sorry, go ahead, thank you.
Fine. Professional development, we had, we did have the training for grade six teachers in everyday math. It was not as anticipated, which was to give them the training prior to the implementation of the program. We actually had it at the end of September, and it worked out perfectly, because they had struggled with it for a month. And so, some of the things they thought they were doing correctly, they were not doing correctly, the box... Fine. Um, professional development. We had, uh, we did have the training for grade six teachers in everyday math. It was not as anticipated, which was to give them the training prior to the implementation of the program. We actually had it at the end of September, and it worked out perfectly because they had struggled with it for a month. And so some of the things they thought they were doing correctly, they were not doing correctly. The box, which was the integral part of, um, them making sure that they did, um, they were, some did, some didn't, and so it was a perfect opportunity to say, this is what we've been doing, it hasn't really been working, it has been working, uh, these are the things you need to know, and the trainer was very specific in her directions that she gave to the teachers that helped them to then move on. But, so it was good that they had at least had that time to try it out, to be, uh, familiar with it, and then to ask the real hard questions, which they wouldn't have had as, if they had had it a month sooner. Uh, we also had the training for the grade seven and eight math teachers in transition math, which was the seventh-grade math and, in algebra. We also had some, uh, in-house curriculum collaboration meetings. These were half-day meetings by grade level to ensure the full implementation of the rigorous math curriculum. This included the sixth-grade teachers meeting, and to talk about math, to talk about the implementation of everyday math, to make sure that they were doing the same things, make sure that they were in the same neighborhood, as far as the time and the sequence, and also the establishment of some common assessments. And those, those, um, grade-level meetings, those collaboration meetings were absolutely critical to the implementation of both the literacy and the math curriculum. And it included the sixth-grade math teachers, the math curriculum leader, the special education teacher, the hands-on math, uh, sixth-grade teacher, as well as the instructional leader. So it was that group that talked about the curriculum and talked about the implementation of the curriculum. We also did the same thing with e- English language arts and literacy, and again, in those half-day trainings. We just finished our response to intervention training of the sixth-grade teachers, and we had all but about two teachers there that will be teaching sixth grade next year, as well as the instructional leader, and Sandy was there as the assistant principal. And we had numerous evaluation and observation conversations with, uh, Ken Chapman as an administrative team to make sure that when we were doing the observations and evaluations, that we as a, a group, being myself, uh, Sandy, Dan, and Tracy as our instructional leader, were writing our reports the same way, our observations the same way, um, in, in implementation of the past curriculum, the past evaluation system, not the new one that will be in effect. School climate, um, I can't thank the staff enough for their positive, uh, collegiality, their flexibility, their cooperation. They kept a good sense of humor, and of ob- obviously their professionalism as we went through last year. And believe it or not, as I had the, uh, state of the school forum, as I talked with students and staff and parents, um, most of them enjoyed doing the critical thinking worldview and the final analysis, even though we have gone to social studies for next year, which I will speak to. Uh, one of the successes also was the memorandum of, uh, of understanding that came out of all of that change that had to happen with teachers teaching out of their, um, subject area, and that was that there was a, uh, scheduling committee that was formed, that was to report to the superintendent of schools, and to talk about what are the priorities for next year, meaning the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Um, we have a positive, what I feel is a positive climate and culture certainly reflected in our satisfaction surveys, and in our Mastel when they talked about, uh, liking to work where you do, uh, that translates into an appropriate academic learning environment. We added in this past year with the redoing of the schedule, we actually added twenty hours of additional learning time in both math, English language arts, and science, critical especially in the mathematics and putting in the new math curriculum. We have decreased the number of, uh, out-of-school suspensions, as you saw in the, uh, school improvement plan, and over the past five years have, almost have that. And we also have increased the number of students recognized for academic excellence and citizenship. We've increased the school pa- the student participation in school activities. I think as you remember, last year, one of our goals was to increase the number of activities offered to students, and we, uh, have now forty-seven percent of the schools, forty-seven percent of the students engaged in an activity. That does not count those who are also, uh, going on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday for extra help with the teachers. We started an iPad pilot program in the sixth grade with Bonnie LaSalle, our math teacher. Um, can't speak enough about the ASD and the Learning Center programs that we have, and the integration of those students in the life of the school, and that was quite noticeable at the gra- grade eight promotion ceremony. We, uh, improved on our transition programs of grade five to six and grade eight to nine. We started, uh, participating with the eighth grade, offering eighth graders the, uh, chance to participate with the high school in some athletic endeavors. This past spring, it was tennis and track, and in the fall, we will be involved with field hockey, golf, and cross-country. Uh, again, the eligibility rules for the, uh, middle school, uh, that students must pass all of their subjects in order to participate. The grade eight class of two thousand and twelve, um, they were a, a, a tremendous group of young people that are going forward, hopefully most of them to the high school. Uh, they had a great, uh, personality as a, as a class, um, and they certainly reflected our theme of caring, cooperative, and respectful. And again, one of our successes was the, uh, school website, which we keep updated with the daily announcements so that parents can be informed of all the activities that are happening. Other successes we have, portfolio night. This year, we took portfolio night, and we also did the grade five to six parent orientation night, and we also had the showcase for all of the school activities and clubs that same night, so that we had quite a, uh, quite a crowd here. It was also the same night as the awards at the, uh, high school, so we probably caused quite a traffic jam with everybody, uh, as far as the, uh, the, uh, the area is concerned. Uh, we also, uh, sta- worked with, uh, UMass Dartmouth on the Upwood Bound program for all eighth graders, bringing them to UMass Dartmouth, uh, for a morning, and also having the folks from Upwood Bound come here. We held the first state of the school, state of the middle school forum, asking parents what they liked, didn't like, uh, about the school, and what needed to change for the future, and used that as lo- as well as the information from the scheduling committee, as well as some surveys that were done to, uh, form the, uh, schedule for next year. We increased parent information nights to talk about the schedule for next year as well. And our parent-teacher association, uh, is terrific. Uh, their support of, uh, student awards, field trips, activities, the assembly programs, um, has been wonderful. And then, probably our success also is the increased use of the building by the community and the school district. So those are what we saw, were some of our challenges we started in, some of our successes. You have the things that were met as far as the specifics, uh, of the school improvement plan. Happy to answer any questions about this past year, or any questions you might have, and then to talk about what's happening for the future.
Good place to pause. Ken, any questions?
Yeah.
Also.
Mike?
Uh, yes, just the, um, the full-time instructional leader is, i- i- is that just the person dedicated to being an instructional leader, or are, are they teaching too?
No, just dedicated to being an instructional leader, doing observations, making sure that the curriculums are implemented, uh, giving support to, uh, to the teaching staff, uh, yes, full-time position.
Thank you. Um, also, I noticed the, uh, the state of the middle school. I really like that idea. Does, does the high school do something like that?
He does something, um, with good news that he puts out, um, rather than the state of, uh, school.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned, hope, you hope that those fine middle school, the eighth graders, would, would be moving on to the high school. What is the trend with respect to Upper Cape?
They seem to be, uh, last year, I think it was somewhere in the area of sixty students went to the Upper Cape, and they tended to be students who were, uh, who had some tremendous abilities, uh, academ-
When you say last year, this, this immediate past-
That's correct.
So we, we lost sixty students to Upper Cape as, as of the end of this year?
Yes, I think it was fifty-eight, fifty-eight of sixty.
Okay, and you're saying they were some of our best students?
That's correct.
And what is the trend, if, as compared, since you've been here, for example, in terms of numbers?
It's probably gone up a little bit, not significant. I think this coming year, there, we, we certainly had more students apply to and be interviewed by, um, than we have in the past. But we don't know how many of those are going to be accepted, and those, how many of those are gonna go, so you really have to kinda wait till September to take a look at that number.
So you, so it's September before you find out the actual impact of those applications?
That's correct. Cause a lot of students apply, but then choose not to go. And, 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 you know, for example, some of the students that participated in the spring track, the girls' spring track, had their names on the list, but they also now have been involved in the high school, so I hope that that becomes a draw for them to remain at the high school, and, you know, as one of the, the pieces, one of the caveats, if you will.
Understand. When, when you, do you have interactions with either the students or their parents, um, and how do they get exposed to Upper Cape?
Upper Cape comes and gives them, uh, a presentation.
One-
One presentation is, they have a video presentation, they have an open house at Upper Cape, and, um, then all of the interviews this year for Upper Cape were held at Upper Cape on two Saturdays in March.
And do you get, do you get feedback from either students or parents as to the, the draw that Upper Cape represents?
In many cases, it's the programs that they offer.
Okay. Anything else before Howard moves on?
Are we, are we gonna be discussing this document separately?
It's all part of-
Alright, so I'll discuss it.
Yes.
Goals for next year will be next.
You wanna talk about the past or the future?
Um, past.
Go ahead.
Alright. Um, the, the graph here for the annual suspension rate, um, pretty dramatic. Um, how, how do you, what do you attribute to that success?
The, the hard work of two assistant principals, and the staff that's committed to caring, cooperative, and respectful.
Excellent.
I'll sit, that's it, man. Continue.
The, um, the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, uh, goals. Uh, first one, obviously, is the, to continue MCAS improvement in English language arts and math. You can see that we've indicated a seven percent. Um, if my understanding is correct, we will be given a number, um, by DSEC in the state to, uh, that we have to improve by, but seven percent is what I thought was, was reasonable. We were implementing a new master schedule. The scheduling committee, and the parents, and students, and everybody gave feedback as to, uh, what life at the middle school should be like, and what programs should be offered. So with that, we came up with a new schedule. Um, the superintendent, when he met with the scheduling committee, set down some parameters, um, that the staff we have is the staff we have, is the staff we have. Um, therefore, uh, we need to make sure that everybody's certified in the area that they're teaching, um, even if it's outside of the, uh, the, um, their main subject area. So with that, we took in all of the things that would, that could be possible, and we ended up doing the following. We ended up, and, and I think I tried to list many of them on that page of the school improvement, was the, um, first, grade six and seven will still be three houses, Douglas House, Franklin House, Nobel House. Students will stay in the houses for three, for two years, excuse me. Eighth grade will come down to two teams. It'll be more like the high school in the sense of the, their, their interaction. All, one of the things the kids always said is, I really don't mind what house I'm in, as long as I could see my friends from time to time. And so, based on that, we, we said, okay, why don't we do lunches a little bit different? So we are doing lunches by grade level, so that all sixth graders will eat lunch at the same time. They eat the first lunch, seventh graders eat second lunch, and eighth graders eat third lunch. We then said, okay, we have, um, social studies, it needs to be taught outside, why don't we freeze D block? So we froze D block, which is the social studies block. We increased, uh, social studies from four days to six days. We are in a six-day cycle. We have four fifty-seven-minute days and two sixty-eights. This past year, we had four sixty-eights and two fifty-sevens. Students still have two, uh, physical education and health every six-day cycle. For a sixth grader, we added art. Um, we have them, gave them an opportunity to have art. We also, as the, the Blues Brothers would say, is that we are bringing back the band, okay, that we're reforming the band. So we have frozen ASB, uh, academic support block, as we had a few years ago, that, so that band can happen at grade six, band can happen at grade seven, band can happen at grade eight. During the day, that's when, uh, Mr. Ulrich would be able to get those students together, students who had, uh, taken up an instrument in, uh, fifth grade, fourth or fifth grade, and are coming here as sixth graders. They will be able to then get started with the band. We have about twenty-two other students in grade seven and eight who had been in the band, had taken up an instrument, and have wavered from that in, in some way, or stayed with it, but about that number of students. So they will have that opportunity for, for a fifty-seven-minute block to meet with Mr. Ulrich. Band collectively, grades si- six, seven, and eight together as a performing group, will be able to meet after school from two fifteen until three thirty on one of our late bus nights, either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. So the band is back. With that also will be the chance for him to do, uh, music sectionals with that. We've also added two days of art, so that those students who are interested in art at sixth grade may participate in art as well. Seventh grade, again, the lunches are the, the same, all the kids eat together. Um, and at seventh grade, they already take art, but we have added a new, uh, a, a new program being math applications in science, technology, and engineering, and that will be a sixty-day course, um, across. For all students will participate in that. They'll also get reading and literacy, taught by our, one of our English teachers, and, um, the, the math application is taught by a math teacher, and then they will pay, take their art. They will also have a chance at band. In grade eight, we go to two four-person teams, the blue team and the silver team, and there each, uh, subject area will be distinct. We also, um, are going to offer French and Spanish full-year program comparable to the first year that they would have done at the high school here in the, uh, eighth grade as we had done before, before last year when we had to go to the trimester. So that the students in the eighth grade will have English language arts, math, science, social studies, and foreign language, full year of French, full year of Spanish. Eighth graders will also have a chance at music, and those eighth graders who, um, liked art and would like to continue with art will have a, a chance to do that as well in the eighth grade. Those students who are, and we usually have a group of students who, um, the foreign language would not, we have reading and literacy for, for those, for those students, okay? And eighth graders eating lunch together. Uh, they also will be separated in a different, distinct parts of the building. The one thing you don't wanna do is put all of the eighth graders together, so as a result, um, we have, uh, put them in two separate sections of the building. Now, some other things that we have done as well, and as I mentioned to the, uh, to the parents, is that we have a ma- MCAS intervention, and that will happen once a cycle. So for every student who is not proficient in English language arts or mathematics, once per cycle, they will have, uh, uh, intervention with them, uh, with a math teacher or an English teacher, okay? Um, so hopefully, we will be able to get at, um, those students. Uh, one of our goals is to make sure that every student is proficient by two thousand fourteen, and to this goal, we are targeting a specific population, not the entire population, just those students who are not proficient based on the two, two thousand and twelve testing.
Howard, excuse me?
Yes.
Just so we all understand, what is exactly do you mean by there will be an intervention? Could you describe an intervention for us?
Yes, we, what we, what we intend to do is to take a look at the students, take a look at the courses, take a look at the, uh, areas that they, uh, need, um, help with, assistance with, to be successful, and then we are gonna group them. Because we are freezing the lunch block, we have the ability to draw from every one of the houses those students at the same time because we froze the block that it's gonna happen. So what that means is that we will be able to group students in groups of about ten to fifteen. My hope would be, uh, no bigger than that, and that once every six, they would be able to come out and have, uh, an English teacher work with them on the skills that they are necessary to accomplish, which is different than the intervention that they may need for the work they're doing presently. In some cases, it may be one and the same, in some cases, it may be, uh, two distinct things.
Once every six days?
Once every six days. This is gonna happen for students. They may only need it for three weeks, three cycles, four cycles, and they're done, but others may need it for a longer period of time, and we have that flexibility to do that.
Thank you.
But we're gonna try and put likes- But we're gonna try and put likes with likes to get at it as well.
I understand.
Okay. And we'll do that for math as well. So that hopefully, as I stand here next year, for the, to talk about the, the improvement and what we will be looking forward to with the scores, that I would be able to say that we really targeted the students, we gave them the best assistance we could possibly give, and hopefully, we will see the results of that. So I'm looking at that, I'm looking at the regular, rigorous curriculums that we've put into place, and I think that we, we have the basis to, to try and get ourselves out of harm's way. Certainly, we don't like to be there. I know you don't like us to be there, and I know the district doesn't wanna be considered a Level III district based on the middle school. So we are very eager to, to get this underway. Trying to think if there was anything else with the, the new schedule. I think those are the major points of the new schedule. Oh, the, no, the, the other thing, I take that back. The, the other key piece is that we took the special education teachers and we made them subject-specific, so that by, in the sixth grade, before, they used to follow the house. They would have two special education teachers, and they would take care of Douglas House, two would take care of Franklin House, two would take care of a Nobel House. Now we have assigned two to the sixth grade, two to the seventh grade, two to the eighth grade, and within that, one to English Language Arts, one to mathematics, so that they may become as proficient in the subject area as the teachers who are teaching it, as they are going to be in the inclusion classes, and they are going to be working with the students. So the intent would be is that they would become part of all of the professional development as we've tried to include them, but many times, they had to be both in the English Language Arts, literacy, professional development, as well as the math. Now they are subject-specific within that particular grade level, which I think in the long run will, 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 will assist us.
Excuse me, Howard.
Yes, Ken, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just jotted down, what was the, the change you mentioned earlier in the time in, in class? Was it sixty-seven?
This, this past year, yes. This past year, we had four days in a six-day cycle of 68-minute periods and two 57-minute periods. Next year, we have to go to four 57-minute periods, four days of 57-minute periods and two days of 68. So of the 20 hours we gained in instructional time that I said was a success this past year, we lost 10 hours of it in the conversion to next year's. That's correct. But we are more targeted with our, our intervention, and it is the second year that we will be putting in these curriculums, so that I think we have a better shot at it. Teachers would love 90 minutes, but it just doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Yes, you mentioned the art and the, the foreign languages, those are new?
The foreign language, we always used to offer Spanish and French for a full year, which was the first year of the high school curriculum. And then this past year, due to staff reduction and certifications, we were not able to do that. We had to go to offering a trimester program, trimester of French, trimester of Spanish, and a trimester of Humanities. So we're going back. We're, we're going back to where we were.
Okay.
Positive direction.
Okay. I'm gonna back up to a past thing, if that's okay?
Sure.
Alright. You were talking about bringing back the band, and, and one of the things that struck out to me was the, the chorus. And, and you have band, and, and you've got a big difference with less members in the chorus, and I was, I was wondering if you knew why that was, 'cause I know in the...
Chorus, we never had before, so we tried to start it up this year based on some student interest that came from Minnetonka Forest with the chorus person at the Minnetonka Forest School. And because of the timing, her ability to get here, and students being involved in other things, it just dwindled. So it really only carried it for about four, five months, about half the year, if you will. So it was an attempt. We, we need to look at that because there are still students out there interested in chorus. We just haven't figured out a way to do it yet.
Okay. Another thing in the past that I, I forgot to mention or bring up, I noticed you've got non-SES tutoring, 38 students attending that. How did you fund that?
That was a grant through the, that the Director of Student Services procured. So they, now there is no distinction between SES and non-SES, if I understand it correctly.
Correct.
Okay, that we'll be able to use that in, for any student who would need the tutoring and assistance.
Yeah, I understand that now. I was just really impressed that, that you were able to do it this past year.
Well, we, we, we had the lists. We had 200 and something students eligible, okay? So in both SES and non-SES, a few more in non-SES. And it was, it, it's, it's a difficult, it's, it's difficult to get the students here, to get the tutors, to do all of that. We do offer extra help three nights a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday with the late bus included, and that seems to help us a lot. It was interesting, as I went through the failure rate, for example, we, with, with more rigorous curriculums in English Language Arts and Mathematics, we had fewer failures in math and ELA than we've had in previous times. I'm not sure what the explanation for that is, it's just one of those statistics that we'll continue to watch to, over the, over the course of time. But the, but it was very interesting to me, as you went into any of the math classrooms, inclusion math, and, and the inclusion classrooms as well in math, to see students being, being able to do the work, and the, and the expectation level for them to do the work, and to see them working with a graphing calculator was quite interesting. Okay, so I think that, I think it has a great deal of merit.
Yes, right, thank you.
Yep.
Continue.
The, the other piece is that as a grade six, grade five and grade six teachers met this past week for the response to intervention, and we will be, the first stages of implementing that. One of the concepts in the response to intervention was this concept called flooding. And that's where you freeze across the grade a period of time each day for intervention to happen. The teachers were very excited about it, and they put that down as something that they would like to do. I haven't quite figured out how that works within our schedule, but obviously, it will be something that we will have to take a look at as we implement it, because I think the implementation's a little bit different at the middle school and with our, with our schedule. So, but we will, we will do it. They, they were very positive in, in their acceptance of the training and the, the need to implement it.
Could I get some clarification from our Director of Instruction and Curriculum?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there an ambiguity in the middle school as to how to implement RTI?
No, there's not an ambiguity. There is, there will be some accommodations.
I'm sorry, this is important. Could you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
And I, I'm gonna answer this, and then probably also refer to Mr. Luzon to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoever is more appropriate to answer the question.
I'll start with the middle school explanation and then pass it on to Bob. But at the middle school, the configuration of the schedule and the configuration of the academic teams is different than at the elementary school. So you're looking at a very different schedule, you're looking at some very, a very subject-specific schedule that operates with different teachers for every subject. Even on a three-person team where you have every member of the team teaching social studies, the classes and the subjects are more distinct in that their content has greater depth as well as breadth. So when it comes to RTI or any interventions, you're looking at the common factors across the curriculum, and that common factor is literacy. And that is the focus of our current RTI program in the elementary school is literacy. So when students get to the middle school, you're not talking about necessarily learning literacy skills. They've learned how to read, they've learned how to write. What they haven't learned is how to read and write to learn. So it's the application of those skills in order to be able to discern the content in content reading, which is very different from short narratives. And it's also very different when they have to write, they're having to pull together a number of different facts, pieces of information to write.
I appreciate what you're saying, but what caused my question was, it sounded like the principal of the middle school wasn't, although he was enthusiastic, it wasn't clear exactly how it was going to be implemented, and that was my concern.
The, the question of implementation is the scheduling. So you've got these multiple content areas where you, you're using those literacy, literacy skills across the content areas. So therefore, the interventions have to address not only the literacy skills, but their application in content.
But why is the principal not clear how this is going to be implemented?
Because he's still working on the schedule. I think that, and I'll pass it back to Howard.
Actually, I, I'm clear that it needs to happen. There's no question about that. I think the, the thing is, I just went to the training last week. So when we talk about flooding, and we talk about securing 30 minutes, and they, actually, they were suggesting 50 minutes, it's, we already have a schedule in place, what goes in order for that to happen on a regular basis? So we're all in it together in the sixth grade, and it will happen. It's just that, how do we go about making that happen, so that we are all, that, that it works and it flows nicely for everyone? Because it means using all of your resources that you have available. So we just have to take a look at the schedule we have in place, which I just explained, and try and figure out how that's gonna happen at the sixth grade level. So it will happen, but we all just went to the training last week, we just heard what we needed to do, and so we'll get at it.
Okay, thank you.
And then...
Bob, do you wanna add anything? Are you, are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Okay.
And then the last thing that we have to do for this year, for next year, continue to work on our positive interactions with the, the community, with parents, with students, to expand the opportunities, to make sure we have more information nights, that we ask them what they like and don't like. We'll have our second annual State of the School Forum, et cetera. And then the last piece is that we will all be implementing a new teacher evaluation system, and so as the training goes on for that during the summertime, then we will need to make sure that we are implementing it. Certainly, we have worked hard at it this past year in making sure that our observations and evaluations were thorough, that we were all doing the same thing in the reporting and the meeting with staff. So I hope that that was a good precursor to what we're going to have to do as we enter next year. And with that, I, we're here to answer any questions and to anything that you would like.
Ken?
How many, how many house masters are there? Are there still house masters?
No, there are just two assistant principals.
Two assistant principals. So there used to be three house masters?
That's correct.
And now two assistant principals are covering the three houses?
Yes.
And also the two teams, the blue and silver team?
That's correct. So Sandy will have sixth grade, Dan will have seventh grade, and they will share an eighth grade house. Eighth grade team, excuse me.
Was this just done this past school year?
This coming, for the coming school year with the new schedule.
Coming school year. So you didn't anticipate, do you anticipate any problems? Are we spreading, I know it's cuts in administration, but are you spreading those APs short?
They, they work hard, yes. Yes. But we, I, I think the help this year has been to have the instructional leader position, and to have that full-time, and a person as competent as Tracy Cote, doing the work that needs to be done to make sure that the curriculums are implemented, giving support to the teachers, giving support to the administration, and being in and out of the classrooms just as we are.
Okay. I'm trying to find my notes here. You had mentioned a 47% increase in student activity, was that?
That's, that's up significantly, but it's still not where it should be. It should be up in the 60, 70% of the kids at the middle school level. And I haven't figured out, I haven't gone back to take a look at, this is based on their own student survey, so that they said they were involved in an activity, so that's what it came out to. What I haven't looked at is how many kids who answered that also are involved in something called extra help, detention or whatever.
Okay. And we're going back to social studies.
We are going back to social studies. We are. And I'm a history major, so please, it's not, it had nothing to do with social studies, and, and, you know, we had to make the cuts, and that happened to be the place.
I'm good for now, Mr. Chairman.
Mike? Rhonda?
I'm sorry that I'm late, and then I came in in the middle of your presentation. Just a couple of questions. In the goals for next year, and you might have covered this, so I, again, I apologize, but you're talking about student achievement increasing by 12% in 2014?
By 2014, that's correct, and I, and I believe that we're gonna get a number from the state.
Okay.
Telling us what we need to do by that particular date. I took my best guess at what that would be.
And so that's basically for, so it's a two-year goal?
Yeah, well, I broke it down to 7% for next year out of that 12% by 2014.
That's right. I wanted to know, you know, is, is the goal 2% next year, and then all of a sudden, it's dead? So you're really looking at...
I hope not.
Yeah, I mean, alright, great. Next question that I had was around, just around the SMART goals, around the areas of technology?
Yes.
I know in, that there are technology in the middle school that kids are sent home with, or that they, they are able to have access to at home, where they can go on and they can, and they can do programs, homework, things like that. Is there similar, is there something similar in the middle school where kids can gain access to?
Yes, we have study island, just as they do at the elementary schools, both in English Language Arts and Math.
So I don't know if it's possible...
We also have power school, that they can go in and look up their grades, as well as their parents 24/7 if they so choose, yes.
I'm looking forward to powered schools being implemented across the, the district, because I, I know how much the parents that are really involved, how much they really depend on, on that system, and so it, it, it makes me very, very happy that that's implemented at the middle school and high school.
I do caution the parents that they should do it like maybe on a weekly basis. If they do it every day and every night, they'll drive themselves crazy and their child crazy, so.
Right.
It's better that they do it like on a weekly basis, go in and check to see what's happening.
Okay. What I'd love to be able to see in the goals, if at all possible, is a goal around technology about increasing the usage of, you know, kids going on at home, and I think that I'll say this probably in the middle school and the high school, you know, you only do have an amount of time when you, you have access to those kids during the day. So being able to think about how we can encourage or assign or something, and I know probably each one of the teachers do, but this is just a personal opinion, that I'd love to be able to see that in each one of the school goals as a goal to be able to increase the amount of time that kids are going on at home to do different programs online.
Okay.
For the facilitate school-to-community partnership, just around the communication with parents, and I think we struggle just in general around this as a district, and I know that Mr. Luzon's gonna talk a little bit later on today about some ideas that he had. Once the committee or once we hear more about that, I'd love to be able to have the proposal that is being talked about at a district level to really get down to each one of the schools, and so we get much more specific around exactly what are we going to do to increase parent involvement, the communication that we're getting out there. Because I think in general, we talk about in each one of the school levels that we wanna increase that, we wanna do that, but, I mean, similar to the company that I work at, the, those things that are most important, but sometimes they, not most important, but some things like this kind of get shuffled, like, "I'll get to that when I can, I get to that when I can," and, and the, the idea of parent involvement, we all know the importance of that. So being able to get more specific in those goals around exactly what we wanna do in each one of the schools to achieve that, instead of, and again, this is not just a criticism of your goal, it's across the board, needs, I feel that, that I would really like to see specifics around things that we're gonna pilot and we're gonna try to do to increase parent involvement and all the communication that we give to parents.
I agree.
Okay, great.
I mean, we tried with the portfolio night to include two or three other things at the, on the same time, so that we could bring in as many parents. So we did the fifth grade to sixth grade parent orientation night, we had portfolio night, which we have every year, and then we included a showcase of our activities and clubs. our activities and clubs that same night. And then we had the student council members giving the fifth grade parents the tour of the building and so forth. So we tried to get as many people as we possibly could, and tried to lump those kinds of activities to say, how can we draw more people in here, especially the fifth grade parents, to see what can happen for their child, to the programs that are available to their children, to their, their child as they come into the sixth grade. And we had the board outside the auditorium with all of the clubs and activities, and then we had little stations set up throughout the building, where they could actually see what was happening with that particular club or not.
And what was your...
We had, we had a great crowd.
You did?
Great crowd, but, you know, the thing is, we didn't take count, which we really should have had some way of figuring out the count, but the auditorium was pretty well-filled with the fifth grade parents. We started that at five o'clock at night, and we started the portfolio night at 5:30, so that when they left, that portfolio night would be, and we did speak to that as well, that, you know, their child would begin their portfolio at sixth grade six, and that would be their exit portfolio at grade 12. Okay? So if they're in the three-inch binder, and they may need two binders by the time they finish 12th grade, but that, but it starts in the sixth grade, and it is a useful tool, and we talk about the things that the students need to reflect upon, and their learning.
I love the portfolio program. The last comment that I'll make about that, and I'll probably do it for each one of the schools, I did it with, with Minnet, but what, I know that it's a guess, but what percentage of, of your teachers use email as the primary form of communication with parents?
I would say maybe 50%, probably somewhere in around 50% run.
Because of the population of parents that we're dealing with right now, and that is their primary way of communicating, that and texting, I mean, I'm not going to ask teachers to text yet, but maybe in a couple of years, but right now, if we can, if we can at least, you know, that, having a goal, something around increasing our own teacher's ability and requirement to use email as a communication with parents, again, I think that will open up the door with communication between parents and teachers. And I'm not an educator, I understand that, but I know as a parent, that when I would like to, if I have a concern or even a question, the first place that I would go is, that I would want to go is email my child's teacher, not trying to find the time of the day to pick up the phone and, you know, make, it's just, it's, it's something that I would like to see increased in this district.
Yes, and, and we also have a wide range, the demographics of the population we serve and the parents we serve requires us to, that technology isn't always the way we're going to get there. So that we have to be very creative, I think, and very persevering in, in the communication. So email is for some, sometimes the telephone is even hard and difficult. So we try it in many different ways. I don't know that we're, I'm not sure what our success rate is, but we seem to be getting better at it. But even the global connect in the mornings, even though we send out that your child is not in attendance at school, many parents still don't get that.
Yeah. I want, I want the, the difficulty, I mean, of course, it's still going to be on the parent end, what, what is the best form of communication with them? I just don't want the roadblock to be because we have educators in our system that are uncomfortable with email. That, that's the point, that...
Yes. Understood.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Thank you, Howard. I'll make a couple of statements, and then I'd like to ask a couple of questions that has to do with perception. One of the things in terms of academic achievement, and one of the things you didn't touch on that much, was, are we still doing team time?
Common planning time for teachers? Yes, we do it twice in a six-day cycle.
Are we doing any collaborative grading in that time?
We have, we, we actually talked about common assessments, more during the...
Not about common assessments, I'm talking about collaborative grading.
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay.
We, we talk about students. We do talk about students an awful lot.
One of the, one of the best ways you can find out information about students is to have a group, bunch of teachers grade their work, and you get a lot of insight on that. And you also get some insight as to the differentiation of the teachers, on how they perceive student work and the standards that are being applied. So I just, I just think that if we could use that team time and do some, and start implementing some collaborative grading, I think it, it would go a long way. That's just my suggestion. Perception is reality, and, and I know how hard the middle school staff works, and for, in a lot of respects, the middle school is kind of like the, the stepdaughter or the stepchild. And some, sometimes folks that are working in that school don't really feel that they get the respect that they deserve. Well, they've got my respect, they've got 125% of my respect, because I know how hard they work. But again, perception is reality, and there is a perception in Wareham right now that folks are saying that I want to send my kids to middle school. I would like to know if you've heard that, or if you've felt that perception, if you've felt, or had comments made to you like that, and if so, what can we do as a school community? Not just you, what can we do as a school community to turn that around?
That's a, that's a difficult question. As it been said to me, I know that we have six or seven students who have been accepted to Ole Rochester through school choice. I know that's an option that parents have. We also have some, some students in our building who are part of school choice as well. I think we have tried, the, the scheduling committee has kind of given us, it's probably the first time that we have asked the parents, we've asked the students, we've asked the staff, we've asked everybody that we can ask, the superintendent, what is it that you would like to have in a program that met your needs? And still try and make sure that we are being very specific in the targeting of those students who need their skills developed. And my hope is that we have provided some, some opportunities that middle school kids should have in the enrichment. We've started an enhanced math class at grade seven, we have the enhanced math class at grade eight, formerly known as the old honors algebra, soon to be known as something different under the Common Core. So I think we're trying our best to build a schedule, given the constraints that we have, and the staffing that we have, to provide that kind of enrichment for students. This is a tough time for them, and they should have all the opportunities that they can possibly have, because we don't know what door is going to open for them for the future, what they're going to like or not like. So I think I have heard less, and the parent satisfaction on the surveys has increased, of their feeling of, of the school and of the building and of what we're, we're trying to achieve. So I don't hear that much of it, but I am very conscious, and the superintendent makes sure that I am conscious of those students who are going other places or doing other things.
Well, let's be fair, let's just be fair. We haven't given you, you know, a carte blanche to get the job done either, you know, we've, we've reduced your staff, we've reduced your administration, we've given you, you know, some, some really difficult hurdles to jump over and still maintain the same set of standards that we have for you. So, you know, I, I understand the obstacles that you've had, you've had to deal with, but there still is a perception. See, and I, I think that we are doing a fairly decent job at the middle school, you know, I really do. I feel that I, I would stack up our middle school with just about any middle school. Unfortunately, we've got some, some socioeconomic and, and other factors playing into our test scores, and you can't take that away, that's a reality of it. So with that being said, I, I am however concerned about the number of kids applying for Upper Cape, and the caliber of students that Upper Cape is getting. And I'm concerned from two fronts. And I know that everybody probably, especially after town meeting, sees me as a, not a supporter of, of technical education, and it's just the opposite, I'm a big supporter of technical, technical education. But I, I don't know to what degree our guidance for these kids in eighth grade is, is really stressing the importance to their future, if in fact, they have college aspirations to going to a comprehensive high school. And while Upper Cape can come in with their bells and whistles and all of their, their neat programs that are really neat, and it would be an alternative to those parents, quote unquote, that don't want to send their kids to the high school for whatever reason, but the bottom line is, and I've been around long enough to know, that those kids that are going to apply to a four-year school from a vocational technical institution are going to go to the bottom of the stack, and the only ones that are really going to make it are the ones that are outstanding students. The priority is going to be to those students graduating from a comprehensive high school. And yet, we see the number increasing on Upper Cape, and we see from, from your words, the quality of student that is going there. And I have no problem with students choosing technical education if they have technical career goals in mind. But this idea that it is as good as attending a comprehensive high school is simply not true. So my question to you is, are we dealing with that, now, is your guidance department dealing with that as they get ready to enter grade nine?
Yes, I think we are, and, and, and we're working with the high school, so that at the same time that Upper Cape comes, Scott was here to present the high school, and he had the video that he used for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, had the students here, had a parent night the same way, so that no longer does Upper Cape come, and then the high school come three months later. It's all a joint thing. This year, we also made sure that every eighth grade student was involved in Upward Bound with the UMass Dartmouth, which meant that they actually put their feet onto a college campus in grade eight, not waiting until grade 10, but making sure that they understood, and they talked about the programs that were available to them. And they had some students from Wareham who had, who had been part of Upward Bound and, and the tutoring and mentoring that went with that program, but also talked about their successes at UMass Dartmouth. So it was the first opportunity that we've, we've really had to put that program together so that there was as, as glitzy a video, if you will, that was done for NEAS, which was superb, talking about the culture of the high school and the programs of the high school, and also Upper Cape with their, their presentation. So we have tried to make sure that the, the high school is here and its presence is known. We also do the move update to the high school, so that the students are over there. We try to make sure that they come back and they spend time in the lunchroom with the eighth graders, so that they can talk about, and they can talk about the programs, whether it be the ROTC program, whether it be the DECA club, whether, whatever it may be that the students were involved in. So we have tried very hard this, this year to match whatever Upper Cape was, and I thought the, the other program that was real important to us this year was the Upward Bound program, to say to kids, look at, because some of the things that we work with, they're not their skills, and not their abilities, but their dispositions.
I just don't want anyone to get out, I don't want anyone out in TV land to misunderstand my comments. If you're interested in a trade, if you're interested in a career in the trades, absolutely, that's the place for you, over the canal. But if you, if you've got any kind of aspirations that you would like to attend a four-year school, all right, that, you know, I'm just saying that your best option in that particular case is a comprehensive high school. And I've talked to staff and students that have, that have chosen to go to Upper Cape, and they are really, they, they, particularly the students, believe that their, their, their status in terms of college admission, particularly in a four-year school, is the same at Upper Cape, and than it is at a comprehensive high school, and that simply is not true.
Thank you.
Also, Cliff?
Thanks.
Two things, Howard. Do you know how the student-teacher ratio is calculated that you put into the improvement plan?
Yes.
Could you, could you explain it for myself? I, I realize it's not as, and it, it, and has almost nothing to do with the 28 to 1 that you referred to earlier, so, and the reason I'm mentioning so everybody understands, it shows you at 12.1 to 1. It shows the district at 12.9 to 1, and it shows this, excuse me, 8 to 1, and it shows the state at 13.9 to 1, which means you look in really good shape compared to the district and compared to the state.
Right, and they add in everybody that's walking and breathing into the ratio, and they figure that out.
I understand, I understand that, but they're doing it for every school and every district that way. So why is it that on this, the way they calculate it, you look so good?
I wish I knew. The, the reality of my life is that I've got 27 or 28 kids in every one of my classrooms, I've got 30 in some of the classrooms, and everybody is teaching a full load. So there is, I'm not sure how they end up doing that. At the high school, you have some classes at a small lodge and so forth, you have guidance councils, you have a lot of other people, so superintendent may have a better handle on, on that. All I know is that I take the number of kids that are in the sixth grade, divided by the number of teachers who are teaching that, and that's what the class size is that it's going to be for that grade level.
I, I understand that. Dr. Benovich, would you like to align this?
Well, the, first of all, the numbers come right off of the Department of Education website, and they ask us at the end of every year, in fact, I think it's maybe October, it used to be the October 1 report, Michelle has to put in a listing of all the staff that's in a particular building. And as Howard said, they involve all support staff. So at the middle school, we have two school psychologists and a guidance counselor. They get counted as personnel, as well as the assistant principals, that are then facted into the total. Plus, this is a year ago.
2010, 2011.
So this is before we cut our staff by nine teachers.
On the contrary, this says as of December 1st.
At the top, it says 2010, 2011 data.
So it's inaccurate, what it says is inaccurate?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, but it, but remember, this in theory is apples to apples. So if we have two staff psychologists, does that mean other schools have zero staff psychologists?
They may only have one.
Then the question becomes, why do we have two?
Because of the needs of the students.
Because it's a middle school.
I understand, but...
And some districts have maybe 10% special needs, we have close to 20%. So school psychologists are for testing for IEP meetings, as well as...
Team chairs.
Team chair people for special ed. So it goes with the need, is why you have certain staff.
I, I understand that, but I'm sure there are many districts across the Commonwealth that have needs. There are lots of needy districts, we're not the only one.
You'd have to look at some of the other districts to, to make this comparison. Looking at all of them put together versus ours, I don't think is an accurate...
But it's, but it's, it's even better than the district, by a full teacher, almost.
In 1011, it was.
I just don't like data that...
All I can say is, we took this off of the DESI website, is where it came from. So we didn't calculate the number, they did, and we just put it in so that it would be the same for all of the schools, so that each school would not calculate it differently.
I understand. It's frustrating to see data that you're, that you give us, but then you're asking us to discount it. And that's, that's a frustrating thing to do. More importantly, you mentioned that you're working significantly on the evaluation process of your staff. As you know, the, your SGP numbers for the prior year, because I know you haven't got them for your current year, were the lowest in the district at 41 percentile. Could you, could you comment, as of the end of this year, since that process has completed, could you tell me how many of your teachers need improvement? Not obviously, don't even come close to identifying them, don't want anything except just one number. How many have an improvement plan?
I have no teachers on an improvement plan at the moment.
So you're, you're in the 41st percentile as of the end of last year, and not one single staff member needs, needs improvement?
I have no staff member on an improvement plan. That does not mean that they don't have goals that need to be fulfilled, as we all do. We all need improvement. That goes without saying, that we all need to make sure that we're, that the instructional strategies that we're using are effective, that we have common assessments that we can have a discussion about, that we're giving to every student at the same time, within a sequence of curriculum. So from that perspective, we have a number. We also have had a lot of reassignment, a lot of loss, a lot of other factors over the last couple of years. But as far as anybody on the official school improvement plan, the answer is none.
And I've said this to your superintendent. And I've said this to your superintendent. We have a staff in the district of about 240 to 250 teachers. Statistically speaking, that means about 170 of them are within one standard deviation of the mean. In other words, they're right there in the middle, they're doing a fine job, there's no problem. Some are a little better than others, but they're doing fine. In other words, significant majority. Statistically speaking, and when you have a large cohort, which 250 is, that means you probably have 40 stars. You really, I mean, these are, these are people you're really thankful you've gotten, and hopefully you're patting them on the back every day. But it also means you've got about 40 who need improvement, and some a lot, statistically speaking. If you were talking about a very small school, you can probably throw the statistics out the window. When you're talking an entire district, statistics start to matter. The middle school, from an SGP perspective, and let's remember, that's different than the CPI. SGP literally says, compared to other schools, other kids that start at the same point, how far are you moving them? How much are they growing once you get them? They could start very low. They might even end up, they might grow a lot and still not be proficient, but you get credit for growing them a lot, right? So, since you have the lowest SGP in the district, it just makes intuitive sense that you might actually have even more than normal number of teachers that need to improve. Statistically speaking, you should have about 10. But since you have the lowest SGPs, you probably have more than that. I know this is just math. I know you're, you may be standing there thinking, this is a human system, okay? Boy, do I know that, okay? I know that like you have no idea, okay? But it's a large cohort. And for you to tell me that every one of your teachers is proficient, it can't be. It is highly unlikely. So I guess I'm asking you to take a harder look and do the work necessary to identify those teachers that are, that need to improve. Because there's not a person in education who doesn't understand that student achievement is all about what happens in the classroom. Everybody understands that, with the exception of parents, which we'd love to have them all care a lot and be as supportive as possible and be available and nurturing and all those great things. Except for that part, which is incredibly critical, it's the teacher that matters. And you can't tell me a year from now that you don't have any teachers that need improving, in the sense of documented and on an improvement plan. It can not happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Cliff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I couldn't disagree with you more.
That's why we're here.
You know, proficient is not a superstar. Proficient is not a superstar. You've got a bunch of hardworking people over there doing the best they can with resources that have been slashed. And we're sitting up here saying that we want to put kid, going to put teachers on improvement plans, that they don't have enough based on numbers? That's wrong. It's wrong. We, we want to, we want to have good, good faith with our people, with our teachers, and we're going to tell them that 20 of them need to be on improvement plans? I'm sorry, sir, it is wrong. It is wrong even make that suggestion. Secondly, we don't have the capacity to put people on improvement plans. We just got the student, the instructional leaders, we haven't had the capacity to do that. I'm sorry, I, I just, I, I just know how hard these people work. And yeah, they're not all superstars. They're not all superstars, but they're a bunch of hardworking professionals to do the best they can. I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
And it, Mike?
Sort of to the point, it reminded me of something else I saw on here, and I actually meant to ask Mr. Palladino because he had the same stat, but since you're here. I see, it mentions in one of the impact statements, all teachers are certified in their subject areas and are quote, highly qualified. Can you explain, I know that has a certain meaning. What is, can you explain that?
My understanding, this past year, because we were a level three school, we came under federal guidelines and not necessarily the state guidelines, that in order for a teacher to teach outside of their subject area, they had to be certified in that subject area as well. So that they either had to have a K through six, K through eight, or a general certification. And we, we had one teacher, in that particular case, we had one teacher who didn't meet some of the criteria. As we set up the schedule for this year, everybody meets, highly qualified across the board. So it was a little different than the state certification allowing you to teach one outside of your area. Under the federal guidelines, we were not allowed to do that.
Jan, I'm sorry. I need you at the mic so people can hear.
Mr. Gilmore is exactly right. Because of the status of the school in the district, and in order to continue to receive federal grants, all of our teachers have to be both licensed and highly qualified. A Massachusetts state teacher's license is not sufficient to be highly qualified. To be highly qualified, a teacher must hold a Massachusetts state teacher's license and have what the federal government calls subject matter competency. Subject matter competency is fulfilled by a number of different options. The first and quote unquote easiest for many teachers is to pass the Massachusetts state teacher's test in the various content areas that they teach. Or if they teach more than one content area in the middle school, there's dual content area assessments. Another option is to have a college major in a content area, and it has to be a core subject, math, science, ELA, et cetera, history. To, and then finally, if they were not a major in a core content area as an undergraduate, then they have completed course equivalence to a major, either at the undergraduate or graduate level. So, all of our teachers in all of our schools, not just the middle school, must meet both sets of criteria. That is, to be currently licensed in the content areas and for the grade levels which they teach, and be highly qualified or have the subject matter competency.
Does it have anything to do with having a master's degree?
Having a master's gr- degree is a requirement to attain professional teaching status. So, that's another requirement along the way. It depends how many years you've taught, and you can have five years, or you can get an extension to getting a master's degree. The master's degree is just one more requirement. It is not a factor necessarily in either the license or highly qualified.
Thank you.
I hope it clarified.
You have some?
Yeah.
Just one thing, through you, Mr. Chair. Lady Star of Clip, I respect your opinion and your passion for our educators. I mean, I, I 100% admire, you know, the, the educators in our system. I just don't want to leave the public, I don't want to leave the public with the impression that school improve, or that teacher improvement plans or improvement plans in general are something negative. They're not, just like any company out there. Anyone who... The, the documented, the documentation around telling someone exactly where we need to improve, we do it in our schools, we do it as a district, we're, we're constantly being evaluated. The documentation that goes along with that is only something that should be seen as a positive, basically saying that I care about your ability to teach, I'm seeing ways that it can be changed or tweaked or improved. We're all looking for mentors, and this is a documented tool that then will basically say to an educator, to a school, to whoever, that this is, this is the way to go about improving. And so, I just, I, I felt that that was an important thing to say, that teacher improvement plans are on an improvement plan isn't a negative. It is actually, in most cases, a positive to, so then everyone is on the same page on how we need to improve.
Forget it. I just think it's a discussion that should be held between the principal and the superintendent, and not a major debate here, that, I just found that inappropriate. Howard, you all set?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy, Dan, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Panerisi, you're next.
That's a hard act to follow.
Nope, we have no cupcakes on the... Summer recess with the cafeteria staff.
I'd like to thank Ms. Carol Farnard and Mrs. Yerham for being here. I'm presently without an AP right now, my AP starts on July 1st, so my school council also told me that they would be away on vacation, so I have limited amount of support, but I think I'm well represented by these two women. So, thank you very much.
And they can join you if you like.
I'll never get them to do anything again if I ask them to come to the table. But thank you. Okay. I'm an Apple person, so it's going to take me a little bit of time to get this right. Okay. And I just hit the enter button, I just want to double check to make sure it goes, is that?
Down arrow.
Thank you. Okay. Might have to wake everybody up. It is, what time is it? It's nine o'clock, so. This I loved because it really defines what our school is doing, and we're moving up. It's a slow, steady movement, but we're moving up and we're moving together. And to me, that is the best part of being able to sit here this evening. Our growth, and when we go over that, is defined by our mission statement. And this is a brand new mission statement that was developed with the staff. And we decided, and we really paid attention to a lot of the different words and a lot of the different meanings, but this is our collaborative built mission statement. And I think it defined at the beginning of the school year where we were going as a school, and what we wanted for our students and our families. Our 2001 improvement goals, of course, they had to do with student achievement, because we have been struggling to make AYP for a few years now. Our goal was 5% increase in the ELA achievement. We did not make that in the aggregate, however, not all was lost, because the subgroup of sped was a 4.4 point increase, which was fantastic. That's usually the most difficult group to move, and we moved that group. So it occurred to me that, to the staff as well, that, alright, so we've got a handle on how we're going to teach and instruct students that have a little bit of difficulty with this. We incorporated the children being inside the classroom for the core, core instruction, way before they were taken out. So they got a double dose of the instruction. And our end of the year grade and DIBELS showed dramatic improvements, even though the MCAS didn't so much, the grade and the DIBELS did. And these assessments are also benchmarking assessments, and they were done by people other than the classroom teachers, so I know that the data is pure. In mathematics, we made a very large gain. We did make AYP in mathematics, so we halfway there as a school. We had a 12.6 astounding gain in the special ed section. Again, students were in learning with their peers, and when they came out, they came out for extra instruction. The GMAE results, which is the brother or sister to the grade, also taken the same way, showed dramatic improvements. Our initiatives were to continue with the RTI training for grades K 1, 2, 4, and 5, and that went very well. And I, and I really think that it's because of the way the third grade and the ILs and myself, we all went to the training last summer, and we received it very positively. We all came back, we were very excited, and I really think that that set the tone for everybody else to be trained. They, they were very excited about the training. We had our new ELA alignment with some pilot assessments that we tried out. We continued to pre and post test in the grade and the GMAE, again, using that same format of testing, where the testing was not done by the classroom teacher to avoid any bias. And what we did is we had other people go in to test the children, so we had the data. We implemented the new National Junior Honor Society for Students, trying to make that rigor a little bit higher, and to be able to recognize students that are achieving above and beyond, so that they didn't flatline out at the proficient stage. We put in a new playground, which was a community playground that was a very exciting event. We brought back a science fair for grade five, and we had a Journey into Reading sponsored by the PTA. The Music in the Morning with the Bedford Symphony Orchestra, they came again, and our students were able to watch them again, and they had a nice little assembly, and we continue to do that every morning. And then we have grade level data meetings for RTI. So our students, our students' data is taken, we do progress monitoring, and every four to six weeks, grade level teams get together, they analyze the data, and they make decisions and instruction accordingly. The comparisons for our surveys, the parent surveys came back, I think it was 34% return. We did send it out to approximately 696 parents. We had an increase in the satisfaction of safety and security, and I think that was mainly to do with how we handled the morning daycare, because that door to the gym used to be open, or the door of the cafeteria would be open, and we actually have a sign-in sheet for parents that are dropping off, so people felt better about that. The school discipline, more satisfaction with that. We followed the Blue Book, what I call the Blue Book, which is the district policy. And the respect and understanding of diversity, 96, that had a large increase. So these were just some of the highlights. On the student survey...
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you just say the percentage that you, how many you sent out and what was the percentage of return?
Approximately 696, you know, one for every student was sent out, and we got 34% back, and I think the, you want the number tally or just the percent?
No, just the percent. So for the parent survey, you got 34% back, and the student survey was 100%? Is that done in the school?
I believe it was 100%. It might not be quite 100%, but around there. Every child, every classroom had a time that they go to the tech lab to take that online using Survey Monkey.
Okay, great, thank you.
We see that satisfaction with the help they receive, and I think next year, that's not going to be an issue for us, because we don't have those restraints from that Title I grant that says only certain students with certain income brackets can receive extra help, so that's going to help move that. We do have an issue with our children feeling respected by their peers and adults. We have yet to find a home with a social emotional program that is going to be able to help us. And I think that the wraparound grant and some other initiatives that we're looking at, to be able to be in line with the middle school so that children have the same language as they're moving up through the elementary, I think we'll be able to have a better situation there. And safe to and from school. There are some busing issues, but I think that they were handled in a, in a very good way. The teacher survey, and we send this out to every teacher and aide, and I believe it was 70 individuals, and we got back 61, and I think that was an 87% return rate, which is pretty good. So, satisfaction with school safety. In 2011, we had 56, now we have 77. So, we're moving up. It still needs to go higher. The discipline went down. So, and discipline is a very subjective thing, although it shouldn't be, because we have some very clear-cut guidelines on how our students are disciplined. So, we really need to take a look at that, make sure some consistency is there.
Just so I understand, is that a teacher saying they're not getting the support from administration when they think there's a discipline problem and administration might say, "No, that's not a big deal, just deal with it"?
Yes.
Is that really what?
That's exactly what that is.
Thank you.
That, in other words, a teacher is telling us as administrators, "This discipline issue is interfering with instruction, not only of my instruction, but the learning of every child in this classroom." So, that's a huge area. To me, that's a very important thing that I need to look at.
Good question. You answered my question.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the value of the survey is really, that's really good information to get about how your staff is feeling.
Can I just, and I'll test the hypothesis, and then you can tell me your thoughts on it. But, you have three involved classes, children with multiple handicaps that exhibit behaviors as part of their diagnosis and disability.
Yes.
Do you think that sometimes other staff, because when they see a child having an issue, may respond on this survey because they don't like it that a child with certain disabilities may be disciplined differently because of state and federal regulations?
Yes, and again, I mean, it was an unusual year.
Absolutely.
It was a highly unusual year. And unfortunately, when our children are hurting or something is bothering them, their communication skills are not good, so the only way we know that things aren't right with them is when they act out. And it can be disruptive to an entire hallway for a very long time.
That was my point, is that sometimes that also shows up.
Do I think that that might have a piece of it? Yes.
I wasn't for a moment suggesting this is an easy problem to fix. I'm just saying it's really enlightening to know that's how your staff are feeling. And frankly, the high school has some of that problem of teachers feeling that there's an uneven application of discipline too. So, it's a difficult educational issue, is the bottom line, is the sense I'm getting.
It is, but it's a priority, because your safe and orderly environment is your first cue as an administrator. So, although, you know, it's not good that I'm seeing this, I must address it. That has to be addressed. The school culture, I was pleased with, from approximately 48% to 69%, which was pretty good. And that matched the state data, the TELLS data, was pretty consistent with that. I cross-referenced them. And the parent involvement, we're not as pleased with. And I think we have to find more ways to get our parents involved. And I think we're coming on those ways with the grant that we have, that we'll be able to do that. So, that, to me, is very exciting. But, again, a lot of our staff feel that parents aren't involved, and I don't, it could be, and I don't want to be a horse with blinders and say that we don't invite parents or we don't encourage them. We have to continually find more ways, you know, that our parents know that they are welcome inside that school and to make that school more welcome and more comfortable for them. That's something we need to do and address. So, we're looking at the parent and community partnerships as an improvement target for next year. The social-emotional.
Excuse me, Chris?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just as a point, and again, I'll test the hypothesis, and you can tell me if you agree or not. But, the history with this particular question that I've seen before is that teachers and staff sometimes are unsatisfied about who the parents are that are involved. So, the parents of children that are doing very well, who may not have to be involved, are involved. Those where the child is struggling and you wish you had more contact with, may be the reluctant ones to get involved, and that's what is actually in this answer, and that's what teachers are unsatisfied with, if I'm reading that correctly.
You can, you can interpret it that way. I also think that a lot of parents are working, but I think some of the involvement that we're seeing is also just taking an interest in the child's education, not necessarily even being inside the school, but saying that when a teacher makes contact, that there's a response and there's a caring and that there's a collaboration and maybe a partnership between the parent or guardian and the teacher, because they have one goal, and that's to have this child to succeed. I think there's maybe a lapse there, that we have to find another way, another bridge to make that point with that.
Would you anticipate the implementation, full implementation of Power School to be an opportunity for teachers to actually initiate electronic contact?
Well, you figure.
As compared to just responding?
There are two ways you can look at that, Mr. Swett. DECA's right now has 54% free and reduced lunch. The idea that every parent has access to a computer is unrealistic for that school.
Understood.
Even if they did have a computer, you have to have an opportunity to be online, and that costs money. And when people are struggling to put food on tables and shoes on their children's feet, they're not paying $40 a month to Comcast. So, although I love the idea and I think it's great, and in my school improvement plan, I have opened up the doors for our own tech lab for parents to come in and be able to access things like that, because we are excited that the Power School pilot is going to be at the elementary level.
I completely understand what you're saying. I was just asking on a theoretical level, will email addresses of parents be available to teachers to initiate in that fashion?
Yes, they are already. And they do, they do communicate quite a bit, as I do, with parents with email, because people are busy, so it really is the most convenient. Then you don't have to worry about children losing the note home or making a call.
Right. I was just responding to the parent next to me. Go ahead.
So, when I look at the school culture, although we've made some great gains, I believe that happy teachers and teachers that feel that they're really making an impact have increased performance, and there's a lot of data that shows that as well. We have learned how to be collaborative in our learning and in our investigation of our instruction. These are things that we're extremely proud of at DECA's. But, we also need to have some fun with each other, too. The idea of communication with one another and to be able to discuss those really difficult conversations that have to do with a second-grade teacher looking at a first-grade teacher saying, 30% of these kids came up without this skill. And because these are people that we work with for six and a half hours a day, it is family. And a lot of those things that we need to say in a very diplomatic manner are sometimes not said, because we don't want to hurt feelings and we don't want to do that. But, we're coming to an age of transparency, where we're kind of taking more of an objective look at things. We're looking at our data, and we're kind of asking the questions of, what can we do to make things different in the first grade or the second grade, in the third grade, and not so much, what can that teacher do? So, if it's a problem for one person in that school, as an administrator, it's a problem for every adult in that school. And that's how I look at things. That's me, my teachers, aides, everybody. So, nobody stands alone. I don't point the finger at one person, although if you could make me, but I don't, I try not to do that. Our goals for next year, and again, I've bumped them up 2% with the anticipation that we're going to have to be able to move a little quicker. But, now that we have these skills, okay, we've been through the RTI training, we have some things in place. I think we can ask a little more now, because we have provided some training, which allows us to be able to give a little bit more. When I was listening to your question, and I certainly don't want to open up this Pandora's box again, but there's a lot that goes into student achievement and student growth. And it's not always just the teacher in the classroom. However, I agree with you 100% that the person that matters most with student achievement is that teacher in the classroom. The second person that matters most inside of school is me. Those are the two things that are going to move instruction and move kids. But, I believe in being able to have that reciprocity, where I'm not going to ask my instructors to do something, but they do not have the skills, that they have not been trained for the materials to do. That's not to say that we can't be creative and make the materials or make it work and think outside the box, but that may take a little bit more time. So, this year, with the results that I've seen so far, and I've been looking at data for quite a while now, since school got out, I'm very pleased and very proud of the work that's been done at DECA's, as my teachers should be, because they have done an exceptional job. Exceptional. So, we will continue to student, to progress monitor students. And when I say progress monitor, it's every four to six weeks, students are put underneath the magnifying glass. I want to know what they know, what they don't know, what they need intervention for, and what are we going to do to change things? And then I want to monitor that. And then I want to test that, and I want to make sure that they know what we said they didn't know. And then I want it documented, so we can move these children along. It's a process. It is not easy, and it's a lot of work, but we've been able to do it. Kids are moving. And when the second grade came to me and they said, "You know what? We have to have three groups. We have to have a fluency group, a phonics group, and I think the comprehension group." Said, "All of the children were put into that." And the fluency group was the largest. And so, I would think within six months, the fluency group was the smallest, because that's how you can granularly just look at every single child and move every single child and really individualize that child's learning to get that child to move. It takes time, it takes patience, and it takes a lot of energy and a lot of effort from our staff, but they do it.
Yes. Question. When you're talking about, you know, doing the assessment and monitoring, and you want to know every single student and where they are and document it, how, what tools are you going to be using to document?
Right now, I use a very archaic Excel sheet. However, Mr. Luzon has given us another device to use called Inform, and it's going to be great for communication as well. So, in other words, where we find that time difficult for the special education teacher to talk to the regular education teacher, okay, that Johnny did this in class today, and these are the results I had, that can all just be typed in, and then every one of Johnny's teachers can see that. So, that communication tool alone is going to be very valuable to us, plus being able to monitor the student, what we did, what worked, what didn't work, and what do you do next? Because that's always the next question. What are we going to do next? And that should be the only question that we ask as instructors, is what do we do when children do not learn?
Have all of the teachers in the, in your school been trained on it? Is it being implemented, or is that something that?
We all, I think the administrators received more training, but we all received, everybody received an introductory training, and then everybody's going to have follow-up training, I believe, in the fall, three hours of follow-up training.
Because it's an amazing goal, and I'd like to hear, I mean, that's just.
Oh, it's fantastic.
Right. Like any system, it's getting the folks to use it and making it a requirement slash, you know, that they do use it is the, is the only thing that's going to get you to where your goal is, is being able to monitor that student. You have to, that data has to go in there. So, that's the reason why I'm just asking about training and implementation of that system.
And I think that our instructors will find it a lot easier to go through and use their computer, although some of them need to be replaced, as opposed to trying to dig through a paper file. It just makes more sense to have it all right there, and you can kind of just do a graph and things like that, so. And we're going to continue to implement the ELA curriculum alignment with some benchmarking assessments that will be built into that Common Core conversion that we'll be doing. One of the things that I'm not too-too familiar with is the Universal Design for Learning, but I'm going to a two-day seminar in August, and that should help me be able to bring back some information. There's a team of us going from DECA's, so. We've got 7% improvement by the GMADE and the MCAS in mathematics. And open response questions still seem to be a struggling piece with DECA's, although we're getting better. Again, we progress monitor students there. One of the things that we are going to put in, we have actually put in this year's schedule so far, is basic facts practice. We can no longer wait until kids go home, and I'm going to date myself here, in the old days, and you had your cards and you learned that yourself. Our children don't have that structure at home. They need an opportunity to learn those in school, so we are providing 15 minutes a day for that learning piece, because it's critical for math fluency. So, there'll be some time for that. Also, the vocabulary of math, being able to learn the EDM vocabulary and convert that to the MCAS vocabulary and still know what's being asked of you to do as a student, I think that's another area that we can really concentrate on as far as the open response questions go. So, again, vocabulary isn't just in the ELA component, it's also in the mathematics. And there are two sets of vocabularies, one from EDM and one from MCAS that our children need to be familiar with. And again, we're going to offer some incentive bonuses for school, for children that use the computer lab outside of school or do practice at home if they can. Not every student has a computer, but we're going to have some buses, as I understand it, at the elementary level. So, if children wanted to go into the computer lab after school, our aides work till 3:25, and they can be monitored there. So, that will be a nice piece as well. Then we have writing. Writing is another area that, when we looked at our long compositions from last year, and I downloaded each one of them, very few of our long compositions in grade 4 were over 12 points, which is equivalent to a 60%. And so, we were not doing something right there. It was as bad as conventions as it was in the topic development. So, that was a focus this year, and what we did this year is, I think I scared all the teachers with the booklets. I had binders made with prompts that the kids had to do. "Call you laughing now, but you weren't then." And the children had to do the prompts, and then they were corrected collaboratively. And then the books returned into the office so that I could see, because I'm a visual person and I need to see. Not as a check-in, but sometimes as, even as a teacher, we need to see, okay, this is where we need to be, and it is now January, and this is where we actually are. So, we have a little bit of time to get from A to B. And so, it kind of helped us a lot, because I have looked at the initial scores this year, and they're much, much better. So, that worked. Maybe not that one particular strategy, but whatever we did worked. We're also going to look at the Common Core with looking at poetry as a, maybe a month-long or two- or three-week-long concept that the whole school gets involved with to try to build that motivation and engagement. I think as long as we have student engagements, our students will be learning. You make it exciting, you make it fun, and I think that they'll be really ready to learn that way. We also want to be able to use, and we're trying to figure this out, and we were going to ask Mr. Fernandez to help us with this, is to be able to do a news broadcast in the morning, because we do do everyday announcements. We were going to try it out for Skype for one classroom, but we'd like to actually have it through all the classrooms, and we're not quite sure how to do that yet. But, we did that at one of my old middle schools, and it was, it was nice, and children got an experience to be able to present, as well as to listen and be an audience, so. The, we are the ELL school of the district, and our exam and our exams this year that I got back are not good. And so we have to figure out another way to be able to help our students. And I think with the new Retail, Wither, and Access, and all of those acronyms that we have here for this, that we'll be able to do that. The idea of expanding the learning day for ELL students in particular is really important to us, because a lot of times, children go home, and they're going home to a household that does not speak English. So they're right back immersed into their natural language, which is a beautiful thing. But we also need our children to be able to practice English. And so perhaps we were thinking if the children had an extended day around peers and were more immersed into the language part here, that that might be an opportunity. And to be able to help our teachers be trained and to have some additional resources to be able to meet the needs of these children. Again, going back to that idea that we can't ask our teachers to do anything more without providing them with the training and the resources that they need to do that job. And this is a job, and we're going to be held accountable for this, as I am going to be held accountable for this. So this isn't something just because I have 10 children that, that are ELL that I can just sweep under the rug. These students have needs, these needs, these needs need to be met. And it's my responsibility as the administrator to make sure that things are put in place, that these children receive that learning.
Excuse me, Chris. I realize I'm looking at 2010, 2011 data, but it shows literally zero English language learners for, for the year that the data was provided. You're saying you now have a significant number?
I track that too, Mr. Sweat, because I know that you're a data person. So, here's my data. In 2008, we had 0.3.
What does that mean, 0.3 students?
That means one-third of a student.
Thank you.
And 2009, 0.6. And then if you look at 2011, it's 1.5, 1.1. Which, again, along with ELL, we look at the idea of the influx of students in and out of the school. Because the larger of the increase in the number of kids in and out of the school, I believe it was 75 this year, that's fragmented learning. Even if they go across district, it's still fragmented learning. It's not the ideal. So all of those things count into student achievement. When you have kids in and out, when you have students that are ELL, all of those things are added together. Student on portfolios.
So how many did you have this past year?
Eight. Eight.
Thank you.
And I think maybe one student passed the MIBA. So it wasn't, wasn't good.
Continue.
Also, social studies and science. One of the, the nice things that we're going to be able to do is incorporate science and social studies in ELA with informational texts. Again, following the Common Core. We need to make those connections, make sure that learning is generalized throughout all of the disciplines. And to be, for our children to be able to read with confidence social studies text and science text. And so, again, we'll be looking at vocabulary and how we can enhance that. Also, I think it's important for our students to be able to look at the sentences in the textbooks or the readings of social studies and science to be able to say, okay, is this a question? Is this a opinion statement? They should be able to dissect that literature as well, or that informational text as well, the same way they would something that's in the ELA. And that's, to me, is how you get students to really learn all the way across and look at that and generalize that learning. There's new science draft standards that I don't know a lot about, but I did brief. I think the permanent ones are coming out in September, so. But I think they're up for posting now as far as opinions, and people can make opinions. So basically, when we look at social studies and science, with the exception of the fifth grade, we're looking at mostly incorporating that into ELA, although they do have separate blocks in the schedule. And with trying to either have a real, real science lab or a science lab that they can access on the computers. Either way, but they need the experience of that science lab before they go to the middle school. I had to take a step back with my tech skills here of our students, because although I really like the idea that our students can do PowerPoints and that they can do Excel sheets, what I saw that was missing for competency skills is their keyboarding. I don't think that sending a child to the middle school who is hunting and pecking is an efficient way for that child to be able to access technology at the higher grade levels. I think that it's the responsibility, and again, it's just Ms. Pennerice's opinion, to be able to make these children have fluency and to be competent in keyboarding, so that they can access technology, utilize technology in a proper and efficient manner in the upper elementary grades as well as, as they enter the middle school and high school. Those foundational skills need to be, if they're not there, they need to be placed inside the elementary school. That does not mean that an entire class is going to have keyboarding when there might be 10 children that know keyboarding. Again, that differentiation needs to be made inside technology as well as it is in every other class that the children take.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm happy with this, just because it's kind of like you're helping them exercise their other fingers before they get into texting just, just their thumbs, because they really use these, but you're going to help them use the other. And what I'm seeing, just in the workforce, is, is how much of an impact that makes in your day-to-day activities, no matter what job that you have. And there are still, there are people that I work with that, that still do this. And I actually have one person that types with, she types with only one hand. So she, it's crazy, so anyway. I see how far with some of the people that I work with, what, what limitations they have by not having this skill.
And that's just it, is we're limiting our children. So that was another area. We have, sometimes our attendance issues aren't huge in that a lot of children are out for a lot of time. But we have a core set of children that are out a lot, either because parents don't bring them to school, they miss the bus, they don't have any way to get to school. And sometimes our kids are out for extended periods of time. We're going to have a K through five therapeutic day school in our school for next year. And between that school and the general education population, I, I want to make sure that attendance is solid for our school. I would hate to think that we go through all the bother of, of, you know, and exercise of doing the best we can for education and everything, and then not being able to achieve because of the attendance issue. So that's something that I have in the back of my mind, that I really have to keep an eye on, because many of our children, they go and, and they'll come back, and then they'll go, or they'll have to maybe take a break. And to improve the community and parent involvement, again, we've had our spaghetti dinners. That parents seem to be very happy with, and our dances, so we want to kind of expand that or continue it. We will, again, the teacher evaluation system part two, it's going to continue to be expanded, and we have some more formal documents and some ways of looking at instruction and feedback strategies that we'll be using for our teachers. We did use that this year. Teachers did receive feedback, and there were points of discussion, not in a punitive way, but in a way that we asked. We did ask our teachers that they post the objectives and the learning standards inside their classroom, and to have summarizes and activators in their lessons. So what we've done as an administrative team is, we said, this is what we're really going to be looking for this month. We gave some PD on this. And then the expectation was that we want to be able to see that inside the classrooms by a certain day. So it was one, one of these things where, okay, I'm going to come up and have this big surprise, and, oh, you didn't have an activator or summarizer, you didn't have this posted, and you didn't mention the objectives. That, those objectives have to be communicated to children in a meaningful way, so that they grasp on that learning, which is where the activator comes in. And so teachers were expected to have these parts in their lessons. And when we did walkthroughs, there were specific things that we were looking for. We are looking at the RTI, trying to do maybe a crosswalk between the RTI and the Massachusetts instruction, so that people don't get confused. They're, they're basically very much the same, very little difference. It's just Massachusetts data on it. And again, our use of data to drive school and student decisions will continue. The data that we get is from the pre- and post-test, and then we do mid-year testing. And there is some formative assessment that is done informally by the teachers during, during those two times. But that data is given to the teachers. All of our teachers had their data at the end of the school year to reflect upon, and they could see their own student growth. And that can work two ways. I can give them that data sheet that shows the student growth, and it's not too much, and it's a point of reflection. It's yours, you own it. Or I can give you that, and our teachers, I'd say 99% of them were absolutely thrilled at the rate of improvement. I mean, we had kids moving two and three stay nines. And so it was just remarkable to be able to see that, that data. And I, I think Mr. Flaherty saw a piece of that data as well. It's just the grade and the GMAID provides all that to us. And that information is very important for instruction. It's important to monitor ourselves as a school. And again, I say ourselves as a school, because it's not only the teachers, it's the principal too. And so where they go, I go. And I think that is it.
Mike? Come back to you?
Yeah.
Rhonda?
So thank you for your presentation tonight. The one question that I had was, when you were talking about the school improvement goals from last year, and you had 5% increase for ELA, and, you know, 5% for mathematics, and the, and great strides, but you didn't quite make it. What was the thought about going up two point, two percentage points this year?
Cavalier and attitude.
Okay. Substantial data to back up the...
No, well, I do, I do. Because if you look, again, I think when you see the 4.4 increase in CPI points for a subgroup that most schools fail at, that is a very hopeful determinant. You, I can look at that data, and now, if that wasn't there, I would have taken a step back. I also looked at my pre- and post-data, and again, it was done by outside people, not the teachers. So I know that that data is pure. So I'm going to make decisions as an administrator based on the data that I see. I see a 4.4 increase in CPI points in a subgroup that most schools and most districts have a very difficult time moving, and we're moving that at DECIS. So, that's about 20% of our kids. So if we're moving that at DECIS, and I know that our children, when they take the MCAS exam, I think we have one student that uses a non-standard accommodation in mathematics. I think we have one student who uses a calculator. The only students I have on alternative assessments are children in the learning center. And there is only one, perhaps maybe two, read alouds, which is another non-standard. So the points that they're making, they're making from knowledge. They're not making because they have an overabundance of accommodations. Again, another indicator that tells me, we have this ability. Children are rising to the occasion. When we first ruled out the EDM, everybody looked at it and said, oh, my goodness, this is such a difficult math. But you know what? Very often, if you scaffold things, you bring it out to children, they will rise to the occasion. I am a firm believer that our children are capable of much more than what they've been producing. And it's my job to push them, and push them I will. And sometimes it's difficult, and I hate to say this on TV, but sometimes we even have to make, allow our parents to learn how our children need to be pushed and stretched to achieve more than just what's comfortable. Anybody who's learning in the comfort zone isn't learning. You have to learn a little bit more and be out of your comfort zone in order to learn. That's Boguski's theory, that zone of proximity. You don't need to be a good teacher to teach something that a kid already knows. Need to be a good teacher to take that child and push that child further.
I appreciate the answer, and I'm pulling for you 100%. I really am in your corner to, to achieve this goal. And I just want to say that I do value the work, the different things that you're trying, because you have the same limited resources.
Yes, I know.
You have, you're working with a staff that has the same exact limited resources as other, as other schools in this district. And so I applaud the innovative ways that you're basically saying. I understand that's what I have, I have to deal with it, but I'm going to figure out any way possible to be able to increase the score. So again, I'll be pulling for you for the 7% for sure.
Thank you. And it's, and it's not just me, it's, it's the entire staff. I have to be honest with you.
Absolutely, your educational community, yep.
They back me, and they believe the same thing. And there's nothing more frustrating than seeing a teacher saying, what do I do with this child? I want to help this child, and I don't know. And that, sometimes that happens. You know, we don't know how to get that child to the next. And that's when you have a bunch of heads sit together and try to figure that piece out. And we're getting there as a school.
Cliff?
Hi, Christine.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of comments. The first is, I like your optimism. The glass is half-full, and that's good.
Absolutely.
Even though the resources are shrinking, the glass is half-full. Again, I, I don't know how much team grading you're doing. And it's the same question I asked. But I am a firm believer that if we have collaborative grading, enough luck can be ascertained from that. So I don't know how much is being, I don't know how much is being done, but I highly recommend it.
That was the intervention that we chose for our writing. Because obviously, what teacher A thought might have been a four-point essay
Exactly.
wasn't. So we had to kind of share that around to get different input. And I think that helped us, especially in the group grade.
It helps to clarify the standard also. It helps to clarify the standard also.
Absolutely.
But again, I thank you for your optimism, I thank you for your hard work, and I'm set, thanks.
Ken?
Very good job.
Thank you.
Just one question. Every year, when surveys go out, I assume they've been going out since you've been there, the issue is always parent involvement. And I know Rhonda always talks about that, way, you know, ways to get them involved. Are there any creative things that you have to, to improve that? Because it's, from the high school level down, that's a continued problem. And I'm not sure if Jeff or somebody mentioned that, maybe Dr. Rubenovich did. Usually the, the parents of the kids that are doing fairly well are, you know, are the ones that are involved. And the kids that are struggling probably is because the parents aren't home. I don't mean aren't home, the parents at home aren't getting that involved. How can we help this so that every year, this is not on here as a, as a goal?
Well, it's, it's funny. One of the things that we noticed and we thought we would do is that award ceremonies and Field Day, I can't, I mean, I'm like breaking the fire rules, you know, with people here. So we thought if we did trimester awards, that it would be better for the children, because they wouldn't have to wait till the end of the year to say that they're going to get an award. Parents would come in, and we could give like a little brief presentation beforehand, try, you know, to try to show parents, you know, what your children are learning at different grade levels. Do it by grade level, and why it's so important for them to just even just be beside their child when they're trying to do the work. And if they don't know, a lot of our parents don't know the new math, and it is kind of, it's intimidating for people that have never seen that before. So we want to be able to extend that help to our parents. We also have a, a first-grade teacher that took another very innovative route, and she took... And she took a core group of, I believe, six or seven parent guardians, and she trained them after school for like a month to assist in her classroom. So these parents felt confident being inside their child's classroom, where I don't think they would've felt as confident without her training them. And they knew exactly what the expectation was, and she's very down-to-earth. So it really helped that piece as well. Because again, the research shows that parents that are in school, kids do better. So even to get a parent in there, you know, was, was an important piece. So we can do that. But we are continually looking. And I do think the, the grant that we just got is going to be another major influence on, on how we look at this for next year.
Maybe you could do a fun thing, like, are you smarter than a fifth grader? And bring some of the parents and have them involved.
Yep, they, they like-
Some of the school committee members.
I, I'd be intimidated, or parent-student jeopardy, I don't know. But that always sticks out on every presentation, from Mr. Palladino's to Mr. Gilmore's, right down the line, that, the lack of involvement. And I'm just at wit's end as to how you, how you improve on that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Flaherty.
The, the, the growth, the, the gains in special ed, what would you attribute that to?
I think it was, if I had to guess, but I don't like to guess. I think the, the most influential thing was ensuring that the children stayed inside the classroom for core instruction. That they were not taken out of the classroom for the core instruction. By that, I mean, if there is a math class going on, the special education teacher has to do pullouts, you know, because of the grid. So they would, you'd take those children out of their regular learning class, give them their instruction according to the IEP, and then the child would go back in. What happens now is the child stays in the math class with the special education instructor in there, or the ELA, whichever class it happens to be. They learn alongside their peers, and then they come out for that additional service. And we also do clustering. And by clustering, I mean, when we do our intervention groups, if it happens to be a special education teacher instructing that intervention group, we don't just limit that group to special education students. Any student who has a weakness in that certain skill or that concept is going in that group. You do not need a piece of paper at the DECA school to receive additional instruction or help in a certain area. And I think that's something that I really need to communicate with parents at Open House. RTI means that every student in that school is getting what they need. Even if that child is higher functioning and can do advanced work. So although the grid tells me that our children need forty minutes on the grid, I assure you that your child is probably getting much more than the forty minutes with RTI.
So, so you think-
I believe it's that the children were learning alongside their peers and that they were exposed to the regular education curriculum.
And, and you mentioned the interventionists, and that is paying off. I mean, it's only been implemented pretty minimally, right, at this point, at DECA's?
Um, it's been in an informal way, I believe, Jan, for how long? Three years?
It's had the structure for three years.
But-
The intensive training just this year.
The know-how. That, that's what makes the difference.
Thank you. All right. You mentioned earlier about being more transparent, and, but one of the, and candid and such. And, and one of the things frankly that's always impressed me is how candid you are. And I noticed that in the superintendent too, you're both very candid. And I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read, it's page ten of your improvement plan. One of the impact statements related to student performance. It says, "The John W. DeCA's achievement scores in this area of ELA have declined every year, with the exception of one, since the 2005 MCAS assessment. Cross-comparison of this data indicates that there is a correlation between an increase in the subgroup category of free and reduced lunch and the declining MCAS scores in ELA." And in the parenthetical, you put thirty-nine percent in 2005 to a higher fifty-four percent in 2012. And I don't think it gets any more candid than that. I mean, we talk about free and reduced lunch all the time, but this is making a direct claim based on data.
There is a correlation there, and, and it's research-backed. It's, again, it's not Mrs. Panerisi's opinion.
Right.
That's why there's subgroup. That's why there's a subgroup for your reduced lunch. Is because that correlates strongly with students that don't achieve as much. Now, you have to understand that DECA's school, historically, has never been the type of school that has seen these numbers. So when you have a staff that is very used to instructing students a certain way, and it works, to be able to instruct students who have additional needs, and students on free and reduced lunch, and students with exceptionalities have additional needs, because I believe both of those figures have grown, we need to take a step back and say, do we really have the capacity of the knowledge to be able to teach these students in an effective manner? And so that transition never really took place, because it was very sublime over a period of time. But now when we look at it and we can see those percentages, because it, I, I went into the school, and honestly, can, again, can we all improve? Absolutely. And, and I can find where you need to improve. I have no problem picking that out too. And I'm sure my teachers have no problem picking out where I can improve either, by the way. But, so, we know that we can all improve. But there was nothing that glaring. Nothing that would make me say, why isn't this school moving? So what's wrong here? So I had to dig further, and I really did. And again, this is my hypothesis. I really do believe that you need a certain amount of training to be able to competently instruct students of free and reduced lunch of this magnitude inside the regular education classroom. I don't think that our teachers had that ability until we had the RTI and the differentiation instruction. Now we have the tools. So now, I believe that we can do this.
All right, so that actually segues to my next point. Now we have the tools. And actually, I was reviewing the, the budget preview meeting that happened December twentieth. I've got it on DVD. And at that time, you're going through your budget requests, and you're looking to convert, you know, two half-time interventionists to two full-time. You're looking for sixty-two thousand in the ELA series books, first year, that's the first-year payment. And, and you basically, you couldn't, you couldn't fathom the loss of one teacher, all right? Never mind what we're looking at right now. All right? And so, this, I've got this quote here. This is what you're, this is, this is your comments on the adequacy of, of the budget you submitted. And it said, said, "This is what we need to give our children inadequate, just adequate, not even off the charts, inadequate education." All right? And that was then, before we, we looked at cutting everything. And now we're at overrides, we're looking for tech, textbooks and technology. And when, when we discuss this in public, sometimes we're, we're accused of using scare tactics and hyperbole. And I, I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I mean, if, if these don't go through, all these gains you've made and all the, the goals you have, I mean, how, how much in jeopardy are they?
They're very much in jeopardy. You need to be able to have adequate staffing. Money and resources, it's only as good if it's specifically directed toward the intervention that counts for children's learning. But you need your staff. And as we all know, my staff has been devastated, especially at DECA's, because my staff happens to be the staff that is lower seniority. So it, it's hard, because it's working as a team. And it's working for one common goal. And it's having people buy in. Human capacity and instruction is very difficult to replace. The training that's involved, the time, the investment that we have in our staff. You can't just bring in another person and plop that person inside that grade level. It's not going to work. It's gonna impact the culture. Teacher movement is detrimental to student achievement. So even though I'm going to get maybe another, I've already lost three, three staff members. So even though I may get this back with this override, I will still be at risk as a school. Because teacher movement, again, research-wise, brings down achievement. So if you, we need to be able to stabilize. I'm, I'm trying to stabilize a school that has not been stabilized. It's gone through a lot of principles. But I need the opportunity for my staff, and I know the board can only do so much. My superintendent and my directors can only do so much. But the townspeople have got to step up now. They're the ones that need to make that choice and say, I don't want that school to flounder anymore. They're on their way. And we are. And we don't need, you know, our legs taken out from underneath us.
And, and it's funny, not funny at all, but interesting that you say, take your legs out from underneath us. Because, so often I hear my colleague, Dr. Sylvia, refer to the systematic dismantling of, of our schools. And I would say, I would say that DECA's in particular, where you've got so many teachers, you, you know, that are potentially not gonna come back, and some that already, you know, have gone. I, I see it as frankly a crippling blow. I do.
It is. But I can't use that as an excuse not to keep pushing forward. And my staff won't either, I can't allow that. I can't go into a new school year hopeless. I have to believe that we can do it. I do.
Mr. Chair?
That's all I got.
Phil said?
Can I just build on one thing he said?
Sure.
And what, and what also Christine said, you said something that really is important. And, and there's not much we can do about it, but it really, I'm really, I couldn't agree with you more, that we have invested an incredible amount of time, enthusiasm, training in our teachers and transfer professional development, particularly in the, in the initiatives that we've got going now in, in mathematics and, and language arts. And the reality is that the possibility lies that twenty-one of those people that we've trained and invested so much in for the betterment of our kids, and in conjunction with what we're trying to do as improvement initiatives, okay, may be gone. And even if we do get the money, you know, the sad part is, they're not sitting around waiting to be recalled. They're looking for jobs.
They have to.
So, I think that's a very, very important thing too. But you're right. It's not, you just can't sit in your hands and throw your hands up in the air and say, oh, well, you know, you, you took some teachers away from me, so all is lost. That's why I think I like your optimistic attitude. That, you know, we're still gonna approach this as the glass being half-full, not totally full, half-full. And do the best we can with what we got. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, point of affirmation, you might wanna take a motion to go past ten at nine-fifty right now so that we don't do it in the middle of someone talking.
I'll take a second on that.
Take that second.
Hold us in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stand, thank you. Tell me about the RTI implementation this year. How did it go? What's its status? And what were the challenges? Tell me about RTI.
I'd like to talk about the training first. The training was really great. I absolutely loved working alongside my teachers. And I think my teachers, at the end of the school year last year, were still energized. So they were very excited inside to be learning with their administrators and also with the other sister school. That was pretty neat, be able to have those conversations and those dialogues. Because at the elementary school level, to be able to sit and discuss curriculum and instruction and things like that, time is not there. I, and that is something that we would love to be able to have more of. We'd love to be able to have those discussions. Because that talk is where ideas and the sharing comes out, and that teachers also learn that way, as well as myself. So I think that opened up some dialogue about how to do different things, and, you know, what do you do when a kid has this particular issue or isn't learning none? That then transformed itself to the school, and then we were kind of stunned. Okay, it was great when we were learning, but now we're in the reality of the situation, and what do we do next? And through the support of our coach, Soshi, with those meetings, and I believe it was every month, that fear was kind of taken away. They had the freedom, teachers had the freedom to ask any questions, to alter schedules that would better suit student needs, and to be, be able to address things. So that was another thing. That was great. The other piece is that we had ongoing training for grades two, and grades four, and grades five and one, I believe, were just passed, they just finished theirs. If there was one thing that perhaps was not good, it was taking the children, the teachers out of the classroom. But there's no other way to do that, to get that training in, to move this process along. So that was an issue. The differentiated instruction and that PD that went along with it from DSAC was very valuable, because it went hand in hand. So we had plenty of skills. And then we looked at resources. And resources are, are a bit of an issue. And especially now with the Common Core. You know, you need to be able to have certain resources to access the Common Core. And we're making our way slowly but surely with what we have and what the curriculum office has been able to give us. But overall, my teachers, at least the comments that I've received from people, it's the best PD that they've ever received, and they feel like they have an answer to that big question, what do you do when kids don't learn? The progress monitoring piece is difficult, but it's part of it. And it's not gonna be successful unless we do it, so we've learned.
Is the eighty, fifteen, five basically happening?
We're getting there. We really are. Now, I, I hate to be dismal on this, but when we go, heaven forbid that the override does not pass, and I have thirty kids in a class. I mean, that eighty, fifteen, five, and correct me if I'm wrong, is based on probably maybe twenty or twenty-one children. And now we're looking at thirty. So grades three, four, and five are slated to have thirty students in those classrooms. So the number of bodies that we're going to have to be pulling out, because we're gonna have less classroom teachers to be able to distribute among during an intervention, we're going to have larger intervention groups than we normally would have, which are too large to begin with. They were too large. So it's not, it's not a good thing.
I hate to cut you off, but I refuse to consider elementary school grade levels of thirty kids. So let's just talk, let's, let's assume they're positive. Let's assume the citizens gets behind us, okay? You and, and your staff specifically. Assuming you have the resources that you had, admittedly, they may not be the same people because you've lost some people unfortunately, but assuming the numbers stay constant, do you think the eighty, fifteen, five is going to be there?
It, yes, it could very well possibly be, because I've redistributed staff into homerooms that have been trained already, and that already part. So new people coming in will be at a minimum at the grades. Because that's where we're gonna lose our gain, is when people come in and they're not trained. And I'm not sure if there's any training that's gonna be taking place next year. But if we fill those gaps with other staff that haven't been trained in RTI, they'll be minimal.
Now, everything is challenging about it. But the one thing, and then I'll stop, the one thing I want to understand is, certainly a big challenge is getting eighty percent to understand it the first go-round. But how successful have you been in getting that fifteen back on track after they've had the intervention?
Well, I think that the second grade example, and also the first grade example, because at our school, we actually put in two intervention blocks for ELA for first grade. Because our children come in with lower vocabulary. So for them to be able to access standard, standardized curriculum when they're coming in so low, isn't always something we can do. So what we had to do was put in another intervention to make up for that deficit. I used to think that, wouldn't it be great to have these kids that are coming in to kindergarten during a summer program, to be able to- to be able to build that skill level up so that they would be able to more easily access the kindergarten frameworks, which are now bumped up quite a bit? I don't know if that's something that we can do. It's an idea. But the bottom line here is, is that if you have people that can take small groups and give intensive, frequent intervention, the children will move along because you don't just keep doing that without checking to see if it, if it, if it doesn't work. You have to change up things. So yes, I do believe it will work. Will it take longer? Probably. But it's not something that's lost and it's not something that we even have a choice on. Because the mass system of tiered instruction demands that we do that. So like it or not, personnel or not, it's happening.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate it. I think we're all, all set. I know it's been a long night. I appreciate the fact that you've come and stayed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Let's go back to policy review, please. Rhonda? We specifically delayed so that you could be present.
My computer died, so it's going to take me a minute to be able to get those things up.
All right, then while you're trying to get that up, let's, let's briefly, let's briefly talk about, Bob, I'd be happy to bring you up if you had, you were trying to get out of here.
Was that trying to get, no, no, no.
Okay. Not that I would blame you if you were. Yeah. Actually, that's a good idea. Bob, come on up. We can come back. No sense in wasting time with technology setup.
So when I, in your packet, and I gave you an updated packet this evening, a two pager. In, in very brief summary, we really are looking at consolidating a variety of the coordination roles for a lot of the grants. These are essentially, essentially all grant items that we are trying to consolidate the coordination of.
Should they look at this one?
Right. So, so there's, if you turn to the charts, that's probably a very quick view of what we're trying to do. I, I can't stress enough to explain to you that this really is entirely a consolidation of existing funds. So we have some major grants that have been in place. The moons have lined up, I guess, in such a way that programs like Title I have had major changes in it that are allowing us to be able to do more things for a broader spectrum of kids who are at risk. You've heard some discussion, or certainly you've heard the phrase, the wraparound zone grant come up. That's a two-year grant that we were awarded at $48,000 per year. All for the coordination of services for at-risk students. Not, not solely students who are income eligible, but all students who are at risk, both in terms of academic and non-academic support needs. So the consolidation is that we would like to have two positions instead of having a multitude of coordinators doing little bits and pieces of things. But two coordinators, rather a coordinator and a facilitator of programs be able to, to focus on these different initiatives. What I've shown you in that graph is that for a coordinator of beyond school time and family engagement, there are four funding sources for those. I've given you the figures, the amounts of money that are available. This is based on last year, not putting one additional dollar into coordination of these items. And the program facilitator for the 21C, which includes the CARE program, supplemental supports, which in the past has been SES services through Title I, and also enrichment activities. We continue to hear needs of parent involvement. Parent, we had the VIPs presentation in the, in the fall, I think it was October or November. We are looking at and have looked at a variety of, of parent volunteer programs across the several districts, Falmouth being one, Brockton being another. And what we would like to be able to do is provide the coordination for those programs in a much more systematic way than we have been able to in the past. So my short version is that we're looking to expand the services by simply consolidating the coordination of those services without any additional dollars whatsoever. 90% of those funds are grant funds. The postings and the positions would identify that they are contingent on maintaining those grant funds as we go forward. You'll see on the back of that page, a list of job responsibilities for those two positions. And if you look at that list, it's a lot of what we've talked about tonight. So the wraparound zone, you have heard talked about. And you've also heard a lot about English learner education, parent volunteer programs, parent information center. We're really actually looking at a center where any information that comes out of Weyham Public Schools would go to one center. So parents have one place to be able to go to be able to receive information about anything that's happening within the school district, both electronically and, and hard copy. Where we would have computers available as access points for parents should they need them. We're looking at the, the coordination of programs throughout the year, not just during the school year. We have a lot going on in the summertime. And again, because of the way grants are written, we are very segmented in how we look at the coordination of those grants. So we're really looking for people to be able to work year round to make sure that we're looking at both our summer programming and our program that occurs during the school year as well. We're also looking at being able to roll the RTI process into the after-school tutoring that we have. One of the things that we need to be able to do as we move forward with RTI is continually identify the needs of kids based on the RTI framework. Not to have some other framework that's working in special education or, or within the after-school programs. There should be a logical flow from what's happening in the classroom to what's happening in the supplemental supports that we offer children. So we would, we would include that as, as part of it. And also to be able to have an evaluation process for the skills, for the services that are provided in the variety of after-school programs that we have. We have not had a formal evaluation instrument in place for after-school programming, but we need to make sure that what's happening after school is of high quality as well. So those are the, the general areas of, of job responsibilities that we are looking for in this consolidation of those positions.
Questions? You all set? Ken?
Yes.
Cliff?
How much? How much are these jobs going to pay?
For 12 months, we would have one position that would be a 12-month, five, five-day week during the school year. And there'd be approximately 25 days in the summertime. And that would be right under, I believe, $80,000.
And the other position?
That's a 205-day position, I believe. The other position would be a .8 position. So the person would be here for a portion of approximately four days a week during the school year and approximately 15 days during the summertime. And that is in the low 70s.
So we're spending $150,000 to coordinate these programs. And we've got schools with two administrators, the entire school. Isn't that $150,000 not going to the kids?
Currently, that is not going to the kids. That goes to the, to the coordination of those various programs through the grants.
So we're spending $150,000 to coordinate these programs?
That's correct. So an example, two, two large ones would be the CARE program, which currently, and again, I'm not looking at a sheet, but it's approximately $35,000. The supplemental educational services is about $38,000 currently.
We have full-time people on board for that?
I'm sorry, not, not full-time people. Those are through stipends for those.
So they're professional staff people getting stipends?
They are professional staff people getting, yes, the SES person is, is a stipended position.
So they're getting paid as a full-time professional staff, whatever position. I don't want to know who it is.
Yep.
And then they're getting an additional $35,000 to, to do this program?
Yes. And the problem, there are a variety of problems with that. One of the problems is that one of the needs that we have for these folks is that they need to be available during the times that, that the programs are running. They need to be available to do some of the networking they have to do with community leaders, for example. And so that, that becomes a problem. We need to have somebody here year-round that is doing this coordination in a more efficient way than we've done it in the past. Because we've had to do it, we've always tied it to grants and, and it's been bits and pieces.
Barry?
If I can just, to Dr. Sylvia's question. These funds are currently being paid out as, Mr. Lozan has said, as stipends to three or four or five disjointed programs. The idea is to try to pull it together in a synchronized manner that it can act where our day program and our after-school program and our summer program are tied together. And using the same money that is already being spent out of grants. So no LEA money is being used. All of this is coming out of grants and it's the money that is currently used. But it's to coordinate it better and so that there is some flexibility. Instead of the person teaching all day and then being paid from 3:00 until 6:00 PM, you know, four days a week plus other times, they now can have a flexible schedule so they are there during this program. But are also there when they need to be to coordinate other parts of this with the day programs now.
The, the only additional money, just to, to round out the picture, is this wraparound zone grant money. That is not money that we've had in the past. We are one of seven districts in the state that were awarded this grant, which is $48,000 a year for two years. And it is specifically around coordinating these types of programs.
So if, just bear with me, all right, Bob? And I, I have to admit, you know, I'm operating here out of ignorance because I really don't understand it all that well.
I'm sorry, Cliff, to interrupt, but what I'm looking at adds up to 38. 33 and 5 is the WAZ and the two, is that a typo?
No, there, there's money left. There's a, it's a $48,000 grant. We, we want to have site coordinators, which would also get a small stipend so that we have somebody from the decas school.
So it's not a full utilization of that grant?
That's correct.
Sorry, Cliff, go ahead.
Okay. If we're paying out currently around $150,000 worth of salaries, how much, how much money is going directly to the programs?
Well, I'll give you an example of the Title I program, about $700,000. The CARE program is, is a lesser number than that. Then we have multiple competitive grants that I'm going to give you a ballpark of about 300.
Wasn't I under the impression that someone in your office was already coordinating Title I?
Yes, I, I coordinate the, I'm the Title I coordinator for the district, director for the district. And there is somebody who, who has been the coordinator for supplemental educational services. That's the after-school tutoring. So that, that position was approximately a .5 position within the Title I budget. So, so really, Cliff, what this is doing is taking those bits and pieces, not taking an additional dollar, not one additional dollar.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
And, and the benefit in terms of our budget is that the potential is there, depending on the candidate, that if they were in another position and they are sort of at the high end of the scale, that we may be able to have some savings there in the LEA budget with this, with a person taking this position in. So it's, to, to me, it was a win-win. We have better coordination. We have people there 12 months a year rather than 10 months a year. And we have, we have much, much more continuity. We, we have not touched, to, to a great degree, the parent involvement piece. We have not been able to have a parent center, which has been something that has been a cry for a long time. The enrichment part of what we do has certainly been there, but we need to address it. It comes up periodically at these meetings. It comes up in the schools much more frequently than that. But this allows us to be able to provide a variety of, of activities. Just another example, there are lots of examples. Another example is the ELE population. You heard that there are about eight or nine students receiving ELE services. But many times they're pulled out of classrooms to, to receive that. There's no reason to pull a child out to get that. Better that there's an beyond-school time element that involves those services for ELE students.
But the beyond-school time portion doesn't chew up the entire Title I money. It's, it's a portion of the Title I money that is currently being used for some of this, some of these initiatives, correct?
Correct.
All right, it's not all $750,000.
Right, no.
It's a portion of it. Right?
That's correct. I, I, you were asking what the grant values were.
So we're still going to have to coordinate the other part of Title I also?
Yes. But there's no additional cost to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mike? Rhonda?
So Cliff, I'm sorry, I'm going to borrow one of your statements. But it, I think it applies here is the whole idea of, what is it? Equals reality?
Perception equals reality.
Perception equals reality. And the thing is, is that we're in a, we're in a position right now where we're asking the voters to, for overrides and debt exclusions and laying off 21 teachers and all of that. And this looks like that we're hiring two new administrators. That's, that's what it looks like. And so it's just, it's one of the concerns that I have that at this time, even though, I mean, you know that I am the biggest champion when it comes to parent involvement and things that we need to do to be able to get individuals. That's the reason why the Weyham VIPs program, you know, but I've also backed off a little bit there just because of where we are right now and being able to get through this hurdle before we then, you know, say, based on what we have, what kind of program we need to build. So that's just, that's one of my concerns. The other concern, but then you can respond to both of these. The other concern that I have is that when we talked about the piece of this that I really do like, I can understand the coordination of all the grants and the programs and things like that. The one piece that I really do like about this is the parent volunteer program, being able to have someone to start that as well as the parent information center and services just to pull everything together when it comes to educating our parents about our educational community. But I feel like it's buried. The, the original intent of the VIPs program, the VIP program was to be able to find funding for it to, that's the only focus is those two things. And I'm so worried that if that goal all of a sudden gets buried or mixed in, that once again, it's going to be a, when we have time, we'll do it. Which I think in just all cases, even in our schools and stuff like that, everybody aspires to do it. But it always just seems to be, you know, the easy thing to kind of shelve a little bit. And, and I have concern about those things being part of this. And then all of a sudden, the same, we're sitting here talking about a year or two years later that we just didn't have, you know, all the resources that we need. So those are my two concerns.
The, I guess I'm going to use Dr. Sylvia's glass half-full in the same way that you're using, you know, another one of his expressions. But I, I think that there is not another way for me to say this, that this is not, and I understand the perception, but this is not an expansion of, of programs or people or certainly administrative folks. This is really just simply the consolidation of those monies that are already spent on that. If, if we did not have this, please understand, we would continue to spend this money. It, it would just be spent in a splintered way. The, the coordination of these pieces really is allowing us to do some of the other things like the parent piece. So in the, in the glass half-full sense, I think this is using the money smarter. And I think it's putting people in place to do the things that we often talk about that we need to be able to accomplish and we simply haven't been able to accomplish. In, in the, in the, in regards to the parent involvement piece, you know, we had a, a meeting tonight as a planning meeting, this afternoon before a school committee, to begin to look at during the course of the summer, folks going out to places like Falmouth and Brockton and other places, coming back and saying, okay, what is it that we can put together as a plan for our first year, putting together a parent volunteer program? So in, in my view... So in, in my view, I think that we truly are able to keep it focused in a way that we haven't been in the past. And that, that includes the, I heard earlier, and I believe Chris's presentation, no, maybe it was Howard's, the importance to, at the, at the local level, at the school-based level, to make sure that there's a meaningfulness about this there. One of the things that, I'll just give you another example. We met with, a group of us met with the Kiwanis Club. Well, the Kiwanis Club has a terrific program, K Kids, and they also have Builders Club for the middle school. K Kids for elementary, Builders Club for middle school. Kiwanis would be a partner with us, paying for, really essentially, there'd be no cost to us whatsoever. But it, the requirement is that there is a parent participant and there is a staff member participant at each of the schools who are part of this with us. So it's those kinds of connections that make great sense when you have people that are there specifically to coordinate these things. So I, I do see those as advantages and while I, I, I understand very much how things can feel like they're buried and they certainly happen to, for me, all the time, that you have to constantly keep those things at the top. I, I feel like this is using the funds that we're going to need to use anyways in a much smarter way.
So just the last question, just a clarifying question, but at, going back to the first point. But at the end of the day, you will be hiring two new people or adding two people to your staff, but, and then taking the stipends away from the individuals that are providing those services?
Yes. It's reallocating those funds.
So again, it, yeah. Thank you.
But, but putting them at the point of the day is that we need them. If, if there is a local group who are sitting down and talking about an initiative that makes sense in Wareham, they're available to do that because it's a ten o'clock in the morning meeting and they're not teaching a class. They can actively participate in those kinds of discussions.
So if I understand you correctly, A, this hundred and fifty-five thousand is not available to hire any teachers?
Correct.
B, it is all grant money? C, it is a reallocation of monies so that the programs that you're, that, that this, these coordinators would be associated with will simply function better? And D, you probably wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the wraparound zones grant? Because that has been the linchpin to providing the additional funds so that it could all come together. So I'm actually very happy to hear you've got a plan to better utilize dollars that we can't use for things we might like to use them for, but they're simply not available.
That's correct.
And the only concern I would have is, of course, that, that these people have to understand that when, if, when these grant dollars disappear, so do they.
Correct.
And that's unfortunate because they may be doing some great work, but that's the reality of the situation. We can't have sort of LEA creep, if you will, which is that suddenly you're asking for it to become part of the LEA because the, the funds disappeared. So as you and I both know, the LEA doesn't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support these positions. So have I missed anything?
No, I was just going to add to that, that it also adds the incentive, as the competitive grants are out there, to look at those things that are a match for us. So as, you know, as I just today was looking at a grant that actually adds another twenty-five thousand a year for two years for academic and non-academic support for after-school programs. So, I mean, that, it's going to be very, very important for us to either make it by being entrepreneurial and, and seeking those grants in order for this to work. And I, I realize that. I mean, that's, that's what we do.
Okay. Any other questions on this program? Just one quick question, please.
Certification requirements for these positions. Do you have anything?
Yes, I, I would, I would want them to be positions that are, have some administrative background, whether it's supervisor, director.
What about teaching?
And also teaching.
Special ed or in the area?
Not necessarily special ed because a lot of these programs are not directly related to special education. And the evaluation of any special education programs would happen by, by myself or Stacy Rogers.
Thank you.
I will take a motion to approve these positions unless people have more questions.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the proposal as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stained, five-zero-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. Now can we go back to policy review?
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, you can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Good night, Bob.
Thanks for the food.
Did I miss something?
Oh, he brought me a couple of candy bars for his low blood sugar.
You know, that's against the law, you know.
They weren't prescription.
It wasn't over, wait a minute.
They weren't prescription.
All right.
Okay.
All right. So I'm not sure what order they have them, but I'm just going to go into the order that I have them. Movies and films in the classroom?
Yes.
The changes that you have in front of you are, we wanted to make sure that it included online materials. So it's movies, films, videos, slides, et cetera, including online materials because that wasn't spelled out in this policy. And that, that the film, that any course that uses film as its primary source, and this is Dr. Sylvia's suggestion, which was great, that it needs to include the list of the film titles in the course description. And, and in the program and studies. So there's, there's, it, it's laid out right from the very beginning. It's not all of a sudden a classroom that says, okay, what video do we want to watch today and study it? And then the last one is, had to do with approval of the, of the materials. And we put in that at least one week in advance for any movies, films, including online materials that are intended to last the majority of the class period. Those are the changes that we made.
Mike?
Well, I have a question. I was wondering, perhaps the superintendent knows. Are there any examples of R-rated films that have actually been used in the classroom? I'd like to just get an idea of what, what we're talking about here.
I knew of a PG thirteen that was used at one point, but I.
Roots is R-rated.
Which one?
Roots is R-rated.
It is.
I know that you've used Roots before.
That's R-rated, yeah?
I think so.
Schindler's List, I think, is R-rated.
There was, I'm trying to think of a particular one, where along the same lines, it was about historical, a group of service people that had some language in it. But it was seen because of the historical nature and it was a good film. But I believe the policy says.
There's a sign-off.
There is a sign-off, the parents, and that's only at the high school level. You can't use an R or anything above PG below.
The, the only issue I had with this is the, the two words it says here. Any, any film, video, slide presentation, et cetera, that is R-rated or has possible objectionable content or require parental notification. I, I kind of had to hang up with the possible objectionable. I mean, that's so subjective, but I mean, I, I wouldn't vote against it. But if you wanted to, consider taking that out.
Like the Supreme Court, if it looks like a duck, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I could see that being abused, but apparently it hasn't been, so.
Well, there is a checks and balance. It's got to go before the administrator within one week. If they're going to use it for the entire class period, if they're going to use it for, if they're going to use it for the, for their class, like a film studies class, that's got to be listed in advance. And it's subject to approval by not only the administrator, but this level, actually, because we approve the program of studies.
All set, Mike?
All set.
Ken?
Move approval.
Second.
The only question I had is, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were all set. No, no, that's fine.
For discussion.
Yeah, exactly. The only question I have is, is this parental approval? Or is it parental just notification? Because there is a difference. What's the intent here?
Parental notification.
Notification.
So they get the opportunity before the fact to object, but so unless they do, they're considered to have approved?
I guess so.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
The way that I read it.
They need to send back a letter saying they don't want their child to participate.
And some other education, like we design for the child.
I think you're, we're saying the same thing.
Yes.
They get told, if they want to object, they have the opportunity.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stained, five-zero-zero.
Hey, the next one that I have is the hazing policy. The change that we made to this, there was one change we made to it, which right now it, it read haziness defined by chapter blah, 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 X, is prohibited by all organizations under the jurisdiction of the Wareham School Committee. We added employees and students. This is something that we felt that was important because this, this, in the very beginning, didn't say that this hazing policy or the chapter and the, the, the mass general law does include employees and students. But what this did, it just talked about organizations and in the second paragraph, and only it talked about employees. We felt that adding the, the comments, employees and students, basically says the policy prohibiting the act of hazing covers anybody and everybody in the school system.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stained, five-zero-zero.
The next one is child custody. For child custody, we just added one sentence at the end that, that, it's in the second paragraph that talked about dismissal of a child. We want to make sure the policy stated clearly that a state-issue photo identification of the individual will be requested at the time of dismissal. It did include that and we wanted to make sure that it did. So then all of, folks responsible for dismissing a child know that they do need to ask for a photo ID.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stained, five-zero-zero.
That's it.
Homeschooling?
No, I have more.
Homeschooling.
So.
Naming and dedication.
Yep. So homeschooling is presented with no changes from the committee.
Will we accept?
There's a lot of debate about this, just so you know.
Yeah.
There is a lot of debate back, let me, actually, no, let me set this up. There was a lot of discussion and debate at the, at the policy review. Everything from, we need to go further to, we need to pull it back. The issue has to do with actually what the Massachusetts state law is on actually what we can do. And what the law states, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you don't get to do anything. That if a parent decides that they want to pull their, their child out of school, we can absolutely counsel, we can encourage, we can ask for some sort of oversight over what they're doing. But the law states that if a parent wants to, what? Oh, if the, sorry, if the parent wants to provide homeschooling to their child, they can. I also, we also talked about really the percentage of kids in our district that are homeschooled, the parent networks that are available. And right now, I'm assured, and the committee was assured by Jan, that the majority of the parents providing homeschooling that we know of are, are doing it in a way that, I, I'm not going to even finish that sentence. We want them in the school, but the, I did have one last piece. So, so what the policy does today is it basically, it, it talks about homeschooling and it does go a little bit further of what we would like to do. But again, by law, we can't, we can't do any more than what this says. And even so, those, some of the things in here, what it does say, sometimes we can't even do those.
Questions?
Yeah, just, what is the significance of the bold italics? Because it's the name of a form, I think. Is that right? There's like a whole paragraph in the back.
Yeah, failure of a home educator to abiding good faith in the procedure.
Okay.
Anything else? Ken?
Through you, so Rhonda, you suggested that we do not vote on this and because there was so much at your committee that.
No, 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 we, we came full circle.
Okay.
And then we basically said, there was, again, there was debate on both sides. You know, just tear it all down and just have one or two bullet sentences that are actually in the, in the law. Or increase the oversight and, and all that. But then we basically came back down to that this is the recommendation from our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. This is what works for that department and, and for them. And so I am asking the committee to vote on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept as presented.
I, I just had a couple of questions, but I'll take the motion.
Second for discussion.
Fine, thank you. Do the homeschool kids take MCAS?
No.
No.
Okay. And my reading of this is, it's, what's the technical term? Crap shoot as to.
That's pretty technical.
As to whether they're going to be getting a good education or not. And the fact that the superintendent gets to approve certain things, but then they can adjust them anytime they want without your approval or discussion, makes this almost irrelevant. But I'm also being told by the Chair of the Policy Review Committee, too bad, so sad, this is it.
The superintendent, right.
Do I have that technical?
Yes, exactly. And the perception of approval is even interesting.
I think we don't have the right to say no to a parent that wants to homeschool their child by law.
That's not the issue for me. The issue is, even after they've made that decision, this, you know, I, I sure hope you're not held accountable for the result because you get referred to in the policy. Do you get referred to in the law?
The last, the, the bold here.
Yeah.
This is what we can do when we feel that somebody hasn't lived up to what we've asked them to do.
And how do you even know if they're not?
Well, then it, DCF either decides to do the investigation or.
Is it your opinion that this is the best we can do?
Absolutely.
Oh, we have a motion, we have a second. Mike, you want?
Just a, a quick question. They don't have to take MCAS till they, till they get a diploma? I mean, like, what's the point, really? I mean, how did, it's like, out of school.
It, it comes down to the right of an individual to educate their child themselves because they determine either they're unhappy with the education of the school system, whether they have a particular religious belief that they feel will not be honored. So those are the kind that we see are either, we have people that just don't want to be part of an institution of learning.
Okay. You all set?
No, I'm sorry. I need to, so, so I guess typically what happens is, do they go for a GED or?
Some of these people do.
Come go college.
Some come back into the school.
And some of them will come back into the school. That, when they do come back is the only time we can have some flexibility as far as what grade we put them in by testing and finding out what their skills are. And some.
Go to college.
Go to college, absolutely. And I know children that have gone through that because they're at the opposite end, very challenged and parents who are very well off and could have a private tutor, you know, follow them basically all the time.
I'm sure the range is remarkable.
Yeah, wide.
Right. And there's actually a, a group, there's a, an association that meet here in Wareham that are homeschool parents that meet as an association to discuss and talk about ideas and things like that. So that does exist.
Just for your information, Mike, though, one of the things that always got me on homeschooling was, he can't disapprove it, we can't set curriculum, we cannot set standards, we cannot do assessments, but we cannot deny them extracurricular. They can play football for our school.
Interesting. And, and where does, where does, where does there's, you know, the state-funding dollar figure, do we get that or no or?
No, they're not part of our chapter seventy.
But they can take advantage, okay.
But we can charge them a fee to play football.
But just like everybody else.
Like everybody else, yes.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stained, five-zero-zero.
Last one is naming and dedication of buildings. There were no change, I recommend accept, uh, as written.
A move we accept as presented.
I remember writing this one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
No.
Curriculum and Technology, uh, we did have a meeting, um, I think it's fair to say that, um, what we learned was that the infrastructure of the school to support what we'd like to do with technology, um, with instruction and curriculum doesn't exist. And until it does exist, um, our ability to expand and invest in more technology, um, is extraordinarily limited, which is not to say that we're not trying to do something about the infrastructure. Uh, Rhonda, you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I think that we, we walked away with, you know, some things that have to be looked into, but, I mean, anytime that we went down the road of talking about, um, the iPad pilot or, you know, different things that we want to do, it was always brought back to the infrastructure, so...
Barry, anything, any other?
No, I think you've hit the nail on the head.
Okay. Um, any other business, I think, unless I've forgotten?
Yeah, you got acceptance of gifts.
No, no, no.
Vote on superintendent.
Oh, thank you, yes, yes. Um, okay, Barry, you want to give the short version of what we're voting on here?
Oh, the vote to appoint the superintendent?
Let's take the gifts, and we might as well take it in order.
Okay, we'll do the gifts. Um, I recommend acceptance of following gifts, one at a time, um, one thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents from the Wareham Athletic Association to the Wareham High School Athletic Department for Boys and Girls Sports.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero, many thanks to the WIA.
Um, I recommend acceptance of a cash register valued at two hundred dollars from the Toby Hospital Guild to the Wareham High School for the Young Adult Program.
A move we accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero.
I recommend acceptance of one thousand one hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents from Stop and Shop A Plus Bonus Bucks Program for October eleventh through May two thousand and twelve to the Mine at Forest School.
Move we accept.
Second.
This, is this unique to Mine at Forest?
Yes, because that PTA, um, got parents to sign up for it, yes.
Nice, congratulations to the PTA, and thanks to Stop and Shop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero.
There is another one that came in, same thing, but to Hammond, if you want to do that, but the same thing.
That'd be great, yeah, let me see.
That just came in today.
Okay.
It's the same program, but it's just to a different school.
Okay, this is to the Ethel E. Hammond, also from Stop and Shop A Plus Bonus Bucks, and this is for two hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents. I'll take a motion.
A move we approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero. Thank you very much, Michelle. Uh, is that it for gifts?
That's it for gifts.
Okay, the Reader's Digest version of PCC?
All right, Project Contemporary Competitiveness is at, uh, Stone Hill College. It allows, um, a number of our students, it's about eight to ten children a year that go there, um, they get a four-week, um, college experience.
One of my tennis kids is doing that.
Yes, and it's, um, an excellent, um, gets them into cre- creative thinking, additional courses, and it's just a great prep for college, it really gets them ready.
It's like ASLP over at the Maritime Academy.
Yes, exactly, but this has been running for close to thirty years, and, um, a group of districts got together to run this, and, um, so the superintendents are, sit on the board to oversee the program.
Okay, I'll take a motion to, uh, appoint the superintendent to the Board of Directors.
So move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero. Any other business that people would like to bring before us? Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, uh, this came to us just this week. This is from the new accountant, um, a Brian...
As in the Wareham Town Accountant?
Yes, uh, Brian Kudish, who's the new town accountant, um, with a new policy. Um, it's actually reaffirming a previous policy, which says, uh, please note the following changes effective July first, two thousand and twelve, but fiscal two thousand and thirteen. Elected boards and committees are required to obtain a majority number of signatures when approving the schedule of bills payable prior to being sent to the accountant's office. So the problem is, when we bring you the bills here to sign, they've already been sent upstairs to be paid, and because we meet every two weeks, but we have bills daily that are getting paid, um, so there's two ways of handling it. One is to say that you're going to have a consistent group of three people to come by the office to go through the bills and sign them on a fairly consistent basis.
What does that mean?
Um, like, every Thursday, three people are going to come by and sign the bills so that we can pay them on, you know, send them upstairs Friday morning to be paid. Or alternatively, boards may vote to appoint one member or non-member to be the sole signatory, which will initially be evidenced by a letter and a copy of the minutes of the meeting. Those are the two options.
Boy, I can see which one I have favorite. Does anybody have thoughts?
I, I don't know if that's allowed under school laws, school, um, something about that we discussed at our orientation.
Um, unless, unless the, uh, committee feels strongly, I would like to, uh, take this up with the town accountant, explore this a little bit, and come back to you. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, I will do so.
Just be aware, though, starting July first, which is, is it Monday, Tuesday, whatever day next week it is?
Monday.
Um, we will not be able to send bills upstairs to be paid without your signatures, so...
Sounds like it's good for the cash flow of this...
Do we have three people, well...
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I have an accountant who really likes to pay people who have services.
If I'm in town, I'll come by and sign, uh, but...
I come by every Thursday already.
I can't always say that I'm going to be here on a Thursday or a Sunday, but certainly, if I'm in town, call my cell phone, I'll be here in five minutes.
How, how late is someone in your office?
Um...
Four.
Four.
Seven thirty to four, it's open.
You, we could literally appoint one person?
That's, he wrote that memo to us, he's the accountant.
I mean, that's clearly the most efficient way of handling it.
I wouldn't want to be the one person responsible for all of that. Can we do a rotating schedule, maybe for one month, three people show up, and the next month, another three?
Well, the, the, the week of the, the week of the meeting shouldn't be a problem. We meet on Wednesday, you give them the bills on Thursday.
Right.
So that shouldn't be a problem.
So it's really only every other week.
It's the off week, it should be the problem.
Exactly, I agree.
There are times we have a couple of weeks in between meetings, but...
Yeah, I, I understand that, but normally, we can still, you know, do, uh, signing here.
And it's true, if we appointed one person, we could still, as we so chose, use three when it was convenient to use three.
You could, what you could do is, one person signs it, it goes upstairs, but then the rest of them, it comes like, right now, you, that's what happens. Enter our I sign, it goes upstairs to be paid, and then the copy comes here that you get to look through.
Right.
The problem with that is, it's possible that it's already gone out the door, the check has been written before you get to see them.
No, I understand that part, but I was thinking on the off week...
So our signature's not an approval then?
Not currently, but it will be with this.
But it's supposed to be an approval.
Yes.
No, I always thought it was. I never knew one upstairs before we did it. I never knew that. Ooh, you guys are slick.
Um, we're not meeting again until...
This has been going on for how many years?
When's our next meeting, Michelle?
Seven.
Yeah, eleven, is it?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that I think that we should start off with the three, and if we see a problem, then we can cut, while you discuss it, and we, let's start off with the three, we're all comfortable that I agree, having one person sign off on it, I wouldn't want that responsibility, I wouldn't want anybody else to have that responsibility, so let's start off with three, and if we see an issue with it, then we can change it, as you're exploring it with the...
And, and maybe, maybe Michelle or someone gets, you know, once one person signs off, or two people sign off, she can say, a message out to all of us saying, listen, we need one more signature?
I can, I'm sorry, I, I hear you, and I appreciate what you're saying, but it sounds like havoc to me.
In, in eight years that I've been bringing bills to this, we've never not, no, a group has never said, we're not going to pay this. Yes, there have been questions, people sometimes will ask a question about it, but normally, either myself or Anna have the answer that makes, I'm not going to, because one of us, right now, Anna's away, I'm signing the bills. I make sure before I put my signature on that, that we're doing it correctly, and so isn't the accountant, but I understand, you know, yes, legally, this board has the authority.
Well, my, my feeling is, you know, I'm there every Thursday morning, and it wouldn't be a big deal to just sign them, and so, for the person who's the chair to be the, to be that signatory, I, I, I agree with Barry. I've asked questions numerous, but I've never had the result being the bill not being paid, so it seems to...
The only time I haven't signed one, though, is when there's been a potential conflict.
Right, like, if it's a reimbursement for yourself, I understand.
Or, or for a member of my family.
Right, right.
What's the committee's pleasure?
I'd say talk to the guy upstairs in the meantime, on the, on the weeks that we meet, have the, have the things here on Wednesday night.
And on the weeks that we don't?
Then we'll do what we have to do.
We're only talking about really, because you're going to probably talk to him next week, or the week after, or something like that, we're only talking about, and then we're meeting, so we're, we're talking about a short amount of time, and then we'll vote on it.
When, when do they come out?
The bills, daily.
Daily, exactly. So they all have to be signed prior to Friday? Okay.
Actually, they need to be signed almost on a daily basis.
I, I didn't hear in the letter that they're talking about FY thirteen bills, it's as of July first, so I'm just wondering if we have a little bit of a press with closing out FY twelve?
We may. But I, I think, you know, what, what I heard is, we'll pick up the phone and we'll call three people.
Right, exactly. The sense of the committee is clear, okay. Any other business?
Uh, yeah, just, um, not business, but a, a question on something you mentioned earlier that was news to me, that you're going to, you're looking to restart the Transportation Action Committee, can you just describe what the status of was, how it was left the last meeting?
Yes. The, the last meeting we had, we agreed that the town administrator would come back and talk about, um, the fact that he was planning to research other towns' experiences with privatization. Um, that was Mr. Andrews, he has, he never came back while he was here, he is obviously not going to be coming back, and, um, candidly, I didn't think it was a particularly productive use of everybody's time for a variety of reasons, so when I asked Mr. Holmes to restart the committee, I'm going to ask him to give serious consideration to the makeup of the committee, and, because I think it needs to be productive, because the urgency keeps getting greater.
Yeah.
My only fear, my only fear, not to prolong the conversation, but my only fear is that we're going to be managing transportation as long as it stays within the town by committee, and if anyone knows anything, you can't manage through committee, it can't be done. Um, and that's the thing that scares me with this committee, and I'm not on it, and, but it is very difficult to manage any kind of an entity through committee.
Amen.
So, that's my only, my only concern. I mean, the bottom line is, we've got to manage the transportation as long as it's allowed, and I would hate to think that we're going to just try to manage it through committee, because it's just, it's doomed to failure.
I can assure you that management by committee is as bad as you described, and there's no way this can be done, it would be totally unfair to Mr. Tatro to, to ask him to put up with that. So, that is not the plan, and my patience for this committee will probably only last about two meetings if it doesn't produce something significant.
Thank you.
Mike?
I was just wondering, would, would it be beneficial for us as a school committee to have a workshop on it ourselves?
Uh, not at this moment, I don't think there'd be enough new information, with due respect to the fact that you're new to the committee, but I don't think there'd be enough new information, but I'll be glad to sit with you, to bring you up to speed, but I'm certain that the other members have, would need our anti-nausea medication to go through that workshop.
No, no, well, no, what I'm saying is, no, no, I'm saying...
Either that or a bottle of Jack Daniels, one or the other.
One or the other, yes.
A lot of transportation...
But what I'm saying is, I've, I've either, I've either attended or, or watched all of the five meetings, and, and, and it was, I thought it was back in our court now to deal with this, now that, now that it's not going to make it to a ballot.
Well, in that sense, you're absolutely right, which is why I took the initiative
I did to say to, um, in writing to the chairman, that I thought we needed to, to, to get together and talk about it, and I've had feedback from the chairman of the Finance Committee saying that he thinks, um, we should restart this process, reconstitute it, um, and do it with some real urgency, with people who really want to solve the problem.
Well, he's not here, I was going to say, if he, if...
Why didn't you just say that?
He knows how I feel.
It has to get done.
Again, again, just, just for your sake, Jeff, because you're my chair, you know, and we agree more than we disagree, we actually do, but, you know, the comment was made that we ought to get out of the bus business. Well, we can't get out of the bus business, it's a matter of whether we pay ourselves or we pay somebody else, but we're always going to be in the bus business.
Well, I didn't mean that we wouldn't have ultimate responsibility for it.
Right.
But it's just a question of whether it's a line item bill, like Upper Cape.
Right.
Um, and we're still the liaison to make sure it's doing well.
Absolutely, but, you know, we just can't, you can't, you got to transport kids K through six.
Absolutely.
So, we're always going to be in the bus business.
Well, you're looking at someone who, if we, if we were asked to cut services, would vote against it. I mean, that's how strongly I feel about it, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Thank you.
We have to go into an executive session.
Yes, uh, we need to go into executive session. Uh, Ken?
No.
For the purposes of collective bargaining, bargaining, thank you, Michelle, and approving executive session minutes?
Should take one.
Do you have to go, do you have to vote to go past the hour of eleven o'clock?
We already did.
No.
No, ten, and Christian, you're considered a peanut gallery...
Go, go, go!
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes. Kenny?
Ken? I mean, Mike?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
We are in executive session, and we are only coming out to vote, I mean, to do adjourn.
That was a forced yes.